It is seven o'clock. I think we're still waiting on Councilmember Sharice Hershey to join. Otherwise, I think everyone is here.
Jason Sharice let me know beforehand that she was not sure she would be able to join the meeting this evening.
Okay, well, it's seven o'clock and as long as everyone else is ready, you can begin.
Is the clerk ready?
Phyllis, you'll want to unmute your microphone. It's in the lower left-hand corner.
Okay, I'm ready.
Okay. Well, good evening. This is a special meeting of the Urbana City Council. It's Thursday, June 25th, 2020. Well, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yeah.
Ms. Hershey? Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Colbrook?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Due to Governor Pritzker and the mayoral emergency COVID-19 orders, the Urbana City Council chambers will not be open to the public during this meeting. Council members will meet remotely using Zoom webinar. You can watch the meeting on streaming services or on Urbana Public Television or attend via Zoom. I'll be transferring the chair to Jared Miller in just a minute, but City Administrator Carol Mitten had a couple of comments to make before I do that.
Thank you. I just wanted to make it clear as we progress through the evening that we will not be answering any questions about the specifics of the Aleah Lewis case. There's a pending criminal case. Everything in terms of video that can be released at this time has been released at this time, and all the other videos related to the incident have been flagged. And as the mayor had announced at our council meeting this week, we've hired Hillard Hines to do a third-party review. So for those reasons, we will not be answering specific questions about that case. Just wanted to put that out there upfront. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. So with that, I will transfer the chair to Jared Miller to run this meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. So we're going to do a quick little explainer for anyone who may not know why we're calling this meeting and a little bit about how we're planning to go through the meeting this evening. So...
Jared, before you do that, do you want to do an amendment? Sorry. Would you like to do something suspending the rules?
Yeah, we can make, we can, we can go for that. I'd ask for a motion to suspend council rules.
I'll move that we suspend council rules for this meeting.
I'll second that, please.
All right, that's a movement by Mary Alice and a second from Dennis. Phyllis will need a roll call vote whenever you're ready.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes. That motion passes. So I guess I can start with, with that. The reason why we're suspending our rules is because general rules in city council do not provide for much of a vehicle for conversation and dialogue with those who wish to probably hear what we have to say about things and talk to us about the things they're concerned about. So with the suspension of the rules that allow us to have a little more free flow in our meeting, we'll be able to engage in some discussion. We won't open the floor necessarily for, for all folks. We'll recognize individuals. A lot of people have emailed ahead of time asking to be recognized, and we'll go through some, some of those as well. A lot of you have read what the plans are. We're going to have three discussion topics this evening. The first discussion topic is going to be surrounding addressing existing concerns with policing in Urbana. These things also include things like hiring an outside organization to conduct independent investigation of the arrest of Aleah Lewis, addressing calls for reform and redesign of the civilian police review board, answering community calls to redistribute funds from the UPD to other approaches for answering calls for services within the community, and I'm sure there will be others as well. We've left the topics pretty broad to cover all issues that could be concerning policing in Urbana. So that'll be discussion one. We're in short calling that existing concerns. If you were called on to make comments, please know that there are two opportunities. So that's one of them. The second opportunity will be on what we're loosely calling future concerns or future plans, things that we should consider going forward, plans of action we can take or, and/or anything that weren't covered in our existing concerns that have to do with UPD. So prior to the beginning of the first one, council members will have two minutes to make a brief statement to kind of set the floor for some of these concerns that have been brought to us over the past eight, eight weeks and lay a platform, and then we'll start recognizing folks, starting with groups and then moving to individuals. Before we move on to that, there's just, one thing I was requested to do is because not everyone who is in the meeting on the panel side can be seen by our attendees. I was asked if we could let everyone know who's here. So you can see all of the council members here. The others in the host are, of course, the mayor Diane Marlin, City Administrator Carol Mitten is here, City Clerk Phyllis Clark, and not seeing anybody else other than UPTV. Oh, and Police Chief Brian Seraphin is also in the meeting as well. So hopefully this will go as smoothly as, as we hope, and I really appreciate all the council members for getting behind us and wanting to help this. Again, this is, this is a purpose is for dialogue. So we're hoping to be able to engage back and forth with folks during this meeting. We're going to go ahead and start with statements from council, and we'll just go in order if that, if that's all right. And we'll start with Mary Alice Wu. I don't know that everyone has prepared something, but if they have, now's your opportunity.
All right. So should I go, Jared?
Go ahead.
All right, great. I first wanted to thank the, the public, all the public that have emailed us, who've come tonight, city staff who are here tonight, and council for coming together tonight. It's been a really busy week, and I just wanted to let people know that if you don't see some of the city council members here, it's because they were given late notice for the meeting, and so they were not able to rearrange their obligations. So along with tonight's agenda, Jared talked a little bit about how we wanted to cover things. We also have kind of a list of guidelines in terms of how we want that conversation to go. And I just wanted to kind of aim to things. The first one is we really aim to have a productive and a constructive and a civil conversation tonight. And in order for us to be able to hear as many people as possible, we're asking people not repeat questions. So hopefully we'll be able to answer it the first time. Beyond the housekeeping items, I wanted to convey a little bit of background about my thoughts for this meeting. So the first thing is, is I, I think that it's really important that we hear all different kinds of voices to move this conversation forward. We need to learn both from the communities that are most affected, and we also need to learn from law enforcement to have real and lasting change. One of the items that really resonated with me in the past few weeks was the Community Coalition's discussion a few weeks ago. In that, Tracy Parsons spoke about a few items that the community should be working on. And he said, "The most important thing at this time is for us to be listening to communities of colors experience." And the second thing was to talk and think about what privileges we personally have. So the second thing I want to do is to acknowledge that we ask law enforcement to, to do a lot in our community. And I appreciate that we've asked them to do a lot in a lot of different realms. I'm really encouraged by the mayor's announcement that we're going to have serious conversations on a one-door operation. So that's great. And I wanted to say that I think that by passing the NAACP 10 shared principles this last Monday gives us an opportunity to have a constructive conversation with multiple people on how we can move forward. Finally, with my last 18 seconds here, I want to thank Eric Jacobson for his 10 years of service to the community. You will be missed by me. Thanks.
Thank you, Mary Alice. Eric, you're up next. If you'd like to read something or put something forward.
So the major point I want to make tonight is about restorative justice, which is one of the guiding principles of the, one of the guiding principles of Black Lives Matter, as it happens. The, I'm fumbling, there we go. I'm fumbling a little bit because the clock covered up the text that I prepared. Anyway, we now function in a system of retributive justice. What's wrong? Who is wrong? How can they be punished? As opposed to a restorative justice framework, which is how can the damage best be repaired? Acknowledging that some damage is irreversible. And how can conflict be resolved and conflicted parties reconcile? I strongly believe we will never heal the wounds in our society except in a restorative justice framework. Retributive justice is a negative sum game. Somebody is hurt, we assign blame and punish the blameworthy. So now two people are hurt. Restorative justice is a positive sum game. In conflict between police and citizens in a restorative justice framework, the parties to the conflict would have a mediated dialogue. Other things could happen also, but there would be a mediated dialogue in which they would attempt to understand the motivations of the other people. A model for the restorative justice is the truth and reconciliation process that occurred after apartheid fell in South Africa. Every bit as difficult a situation as the racial situation in the United States. So I have asked the civilian police review board for cases that they hear to construct a restorative justice scenario and recommend it to the city to help reconcile the conflict in that case and to provide by case histories, a way to move our entire justice system in a better direction. Thank you for listening and for the opportunity to have this incredible growth experience for a decade.
Thanks, Eric. Sharice is not with us, so Bill Brown, you're up next.
Okay. Didn't prepare a written statement. This was, I think, our fourth night of meetings this week, but I have a couple of notes I'd like to talk about. I think the main thing over the past few, two months, I guess, since the April 10th incident, the main thing that came across to me is the over-militarization of the, of the police. I think just the image of multiple people with assault-style weapons behind their cars is not something that I think members of the Urbana community want from their police department. And I understand, you know, the police concerns, and they probably have arguments about why those weapons are necessary. But I think we need to have a deep conversation about that and come to some kind of understanding. We need to have a conversation with the police. And because we are partners in this, they need to work with the community. We need to work with them. And if we can't come to some understanding, then they aren't going to have that partnership. And I think that can actually result in a more dangerous situation by not having the backing of the community than maybe the trade-off of, of not using those weapons as much. I mean, I knew they existed, and I knew they had them. I didn't realize they had easy access and used them as casually, I think, as that. So just quickly, I think the CPRB meeting last night, I watched most of. I thought they made really good progress, so we have taken some steps. I'm interested in seeing the third-party review to see how our response in that particular situation court sort of stacks up to the norm. And I hope that if, if, you know, there's suggestions made that our police department will be able to say, you know, we, we could do better, we should have done better, and we're willing to work on that because that's what we expect. The only other thing, I think, we could add a civilian to the internal use-of-force review board, and that could be done soon. We don't have to wait for that, and we need to add a strong de-escalation to our use-of-force policy.
Okay. Thanks, Bill. Dennis?
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to address the community and to interact also with my fellow council members. We're obviously at a turning point. I think everybody feels the sense that that is true at this time. And it's a door for, I think, very constructive and, and significant change in how we look at interactions between the community and the services that the city provides to the community, including the police department and its activities. But also what the city can do and to improve its ability to support individuals concerning mental health issues. And, and I'm very interested also in building or methods for diverting people who are interacting with the police to avoid criminal court and be diverted to programs that will give them guidance and sustainability for their futures. So I mean, this, I mean, the, what to do at the, at the local county jail has been up in question for quite a long time. And I think not only is the idea of restorative justice that Eric Jacobson has talked about going to be important, but developing partnerships with the community of healthcare, nonprofit organizations, and the hospitals to offer these kinds of services, because it's going to be important. I did also watch the CPRB meeting last night, and I saw that they were making serious new efforts to provide transparency and oversight into the experiences of African-American individuals. And I think the main thing that can come from all of this is that we're going to have a police force that will be more highly trained and more adaptive and seek out programs that are going to be less, less militaristic or less force-oriented and more sustainable for humanity and interaction with people on the, on the level of human kindness. It's probably just about, there's a lot more to say, but that's enough for right now.
Okay, thanks, Dennis. Bill Coburn, did you have anything you wanted to share?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Jared. I want to thank my fellow council members for coming together tonight, and also want to thank the, the citizens of the community for attending tonight for this very critical discussion. I'm here to listen. I'm here to learn from the community what ideas they have for policing in Urbana. Some have called for radical change. Many, many more have remained silent or expressed their positions in a more private manner. I agree that nationwide, law enforcement needs reform. Local law enforcement, including Urbana Police Department, is not Chicago, New York City, Atlanta, or Minneapolis. Urbana PD is a great agency, but it's an agency that I am certain is willing to take a hard inward look at itself. Citizens have called for an independent review of the incident that occurred on April 10th, and we're going to have an independent review. I, along with others, will be eager to hear about their findings once they're completed. Further conversations will be prompted once the findings are delivered. I too watched the CPRB meeting last night. The members of the CPRB meeting, they're revising their procedures and their role, and these are changes that have been demanded by the community. Lastly, I am eager to hear from our citizens and the fellow council members of how we can chart a path forward, and that will be in the best interest of all of our citizens of the community. Thanks.
Thanks, Bill. Just for a quick note as we move into our first discussion item, Mary Alice alluded, but I just want folks to be clear that we are giving priority certainly to folks who are in attendance tonight. All of the emails and statements that we have received, which we have received many, are definitely going to be entered into the public record. I think many of you know that those statements may or may not be read. We have, as I'm seeing right now, 102 folks in the audience who may wish to participate in some way, shape, or form. We apologize in advance if we run out of time this evening and we're not able to get anyone in. So that, please, understand we're on a limited timeframe. We're going to start off with some groups and organizations who made it known ahead of time that they wish to speak. And before we get into those folks, just one more note that just popped into my head. So we're going to do this in a manner of conversation of, you know, statement and response, or so on and so forth, question and response, something along those lines. So if folks are recognized and they have a prepared statement, great. What I'll, what we'll do after that is open the floor for council members to respond, briefly discuss. And if there isn't much more to go on that, then we'll move on to the next folks. But if people would like to ask questions, I would suggest that those who are in attendance don't ask eight at once. Let's try to go, you know, one, one at a time or two at a time, get some discussion about that, and then maybe move on. Mary and I'll, Mary Alice and I will be paying as close attention as we can to making sure we're being mindful of the time and that we're moving conversation along as much as we can. And I expect that everyone will respect and try to do the same so we can try and get as much conversation and dialogue in as we can. So we're going to move into our first public input and discussion with the existing concerns. I understand that there are, there's a lot of people on the list, so I can't see if there's everyone here. But UPTV will attempt to find folks on the list and allow them to speak as they're recognized. And I'm going to call on three Urbana High School students to kick us off. Willem Alend, I'm sorry if I said your last name wrong, Noah Barkley, and Beal Fontz. If you, if you can try and help me find those folk, folks, Jason, get them recognized and allow them to unmute themselves. And I believe one of y'all is planning on sharing a screen. If you would let us know who that is, Jason can pop you over to co-host, and you'll be able to share your screen with us as well.
Okay. Thank you very much for, for having, for letting us do this. We found this really interesting. We want to share what we think about this whole thing, and I will be the one sharing the screen. So I'm not sure how it's going to work.
Willem, I just promoted you to a panelist, and I'm making you a co-host now. And if you, you should be able to continue, and you should be able to share your screen, Willem.
Okay, I think I see, yep. Can everybody see what I'm sharing?
Yes, we sure can.
All right. See if I can move you guys out of the way.
Okay. I would like to thank the council for letting us have this time slot. Now I'm going to, my name is Beal Fontz. I'm from Ward One, and I'll give my the talking spot to Noah for this particular slide.
All right, so police brutality is a major issue in the U.S. currently. And we definitely, I think, in Urbana, need to do our part to stop it. And although there haven't been many cases of police brutality in Urbana, with the exception of the Aleah Lewis case, I believe that we should take measures to make sure that that number is zero from here moving on. The Urbana budget also gives a huge portion to the police each year. And the upcoming year, 2020 to 2021, of the $34.3 million that the Urbana General Fund is, the Urbana Police Department will receive 32.7% of that, or 11.2 million, which is an increase of 2.5% from last year. At the same time, 31.9% of Urbana's population lives below the poverty line, and only 5.2% of the general operating fund is supposed to go towards community development in the upcoming fiscal year. We think that a lot more of that budget should go towards community development in order to help those in need in our communities and, you know, just promote community development, I guess. That's all from my side.
Okay, so now I'm going to go into some specific policies and, you know, actions that we could definitely do as a community as a, and also for you guys as a council. I think there should be a resolution, a very specific resolution for policy of zero tolerance. There should be no tolerance on police brutality and the usage of excessive force. No fireable offenses or prosecution, depending on the case. And the other thing that I've been listening to with the community is the issue of police to police. I think the citizens review board is a very nice thing. It's a very progressive thing to, that has a lot of good possibilities coming out of that. But I think it should represent the completely, I think completely that it should represent the racial demographics and all of our neighborhoods from Urbana, and we should, most importantly, you know, have the input from the African-American and Latino community. I know Mary Alice was talking about this because they're the ones that are most affected by this. We are three privileged people of West Urbana. So we usually don't see, you know, criminal activity, poverty, and this kind of thing. So, you know, we shouldn't be leading this discussion. So, and also be much more actively democratic, you know, have, we could have some referendums to talk about possibilities of percentages of cuts, you know, transparency and always constant community input. I think this Zoom conversation is a very nice way to do this. So, next.
Yes, so the, there's one way to do this, and I think a great way to start doing this is to see examples of police budget cuts or just how different communities are dealing with this issue of police brutality in other cities. And so as a person of color and the descendant of a slave, I think that as our society is built on the the backs of African-Americans, I think right now in 2020, this is the perfect time for people to start making these changes. And I think that the people of Urbana, when they see us take this step, will be very pleased. And this could start a large wave of change around our region, and we could be forefront, we could be in the forefront of, of, of this movement. So one solution was rather extreme from Camden, New Jersey, where they actually completely disbanded their police force. Now, Camden, New Jersey has roughly doubled the crime, the amount of violent crimes as Urbana in 2019. And then we had zero homicides, according to my sources, and they had, well, a lot more. But they still chose to completely disband. And the philosophy behind this was to create a truly regional force run by the county, and thus they had to directly respond to taxpayers and voters and the decisions they make. I think we could take this into account. However, it is rather extreme, and it is truly up to, it's truly up to you to decide where we go with this. Another thing people do in around 48 states and 2,000 communities is something called Coffee with a Cop. This is a system that has been implemented in the campaign. However, I can't find any evidence that has been implemented in Urbana. So it has a goal of community outreach to increase citizen motivation to report crimes. I know that my family members, Caribbean Americans of color, do not feel comfortable calling the police when something happens to them. Although it should be your first response, they just don't feel comfortable because they feel as if they are being targeted every single day. So one way to solve this problem is to interact with the community. I think cops should really get out there and experience the community they're protecting. This can also make the job for cops safer, as if they understand who they can trust. It'll be a lot better for them, and in the end beneficial for everybody. Now, a less extreme example than the Camden situation. Now, a less extreme example than the Camden situation that goes along with the budget, the budget cut idea is a ten percent cut for the police budget in Milwaukee. This is on the table right now, it is not actually been implemented yet. But with this ten percent cut, they plan to reallocate a lot of money to different parts of the community. And my classmate and PR BL will go over where we can reallocate these, these funds to later in the presentation.
So the budget cut. So we've thought that, you know, criminal investigation and violent crimes would be too controversial to cut for the budget. So we were looking specifically for the seven point five million dollar budget for police patrol. You know, the reduction of police involvement should specifically be involved in the nonviolent crimes, which are ninety point nine percent of Urbana's crimes was the info radar demographic. But ultimately, that percentage should be decided amongst residents and councilmen. The ten percent's a very, I know you guys had a one percent cut this past week, I think, of about a hundred thousand dollars. I think that's a step in the right direction, once again, but personally is not enough. So with that money, we could, as we have all been talking about and we have seen in the media about the, the reallocation of this budget into hiring social workers, psychologists, paramedics. I know Bill Brown, the Ward, I think it's Ward Four representative, was talking about, you know, police reduction in mental health situations. There was this specific act, the Dallas Right Care Act, in which for mental health issues and situations, there would be a paramedic and a psychologist or a social worker alongside a cop, you know, to interact with that person and definitely de-escalate the situation and have the right professional care. So that funding can also be going to public education, community programs. I know there's a couple of Chicago youth summer programs that have cut crimes significantly. But there's something else that we could do. And then I think there should be more requirements to becoming a police officer. I was looking at the Urbana, they're joining the Urbana Police Department. And, you know, there was, there was some specific wording of like being objectively or course like, you know, or righteously. I think there should be more specific, like specificity in that, you know, maybe a class on like social interaction and community outreach. I know there's some classes on procedural justice, no bias free policing, ban profiling based on economic or racial like characteristics, you know, demand de-escalation. You know, a class on sexual misconduct. So these are all possible ways that we can reallocate that cut from that seven point five million. That would be decided in the percentage amongst residents and councilmen. So this is another option. I know there was the, the ten steps or the, the N double A C P. So there's another one, the A can't wait. I'm not sure of the stance right now, but these are definitely some great things to look at and ban. So I would like to thank the council for allowing us to speak. I'm very grateful to have, you know, see the real local democratic action going on. But yeah, thank you so much.
Thanks, Bill, William and Noah. Stay on the line, don't mute yourselves or go away. So I'm just going to quickly go over some of the topics that you guys brought up. We heard topics on our budget, zero tolerance on excessive use of force, CPRB members needing to reflect racial demographics, input from, making sure we get input from those most affected by police, possible voting referendums, transparency issues, continued community input, community interaction with police, seven point five million budget cut for police patrol, reducing police role in nonviolent crimes, alternative response mechanisms, funding community programs, stricter hiring policy and police education. Sounds like those are the ones we heard. What we'll do is I will open responses from council or if you have questions, council members for our three presenters, go ahead and raise your hand and I'll call on you. Bill Cobrook, I see your hand going up first.
Yeah, and once again, I think we're all kind of feeling our way through this forum because this really doesn't happen a lot. And I just wanted to kind of ask the question as far as, you know, there's obvious inaccuracies in somebody's presentation. And maybe it's, it's not intended, but, you know, are we allowed to then just kind of correct the record? Just so we can have, you know, a discussion going forward.
If, if you feel like there was a mistake, sure.
Yeah, so I just want to address the, the Camden, New Jersey. So, so that's brought up a lot in discussion. It's, it's my belief, it's my understanding that there was rampant corruption in Camden, New Jersey, so rampant that they needed to disband the entire department. That has nothing to do with Urbana PD. But they just didn't disband the department and leave the city of Camden without police coverage. What they did is they reorganized an accounting department, which still gave Camden, New Jersey, police protection. And there's a lot of studies, a lot of articles that you read that, that when they reorganized and rehired, they actually hired a whole bunch of police officers under the county envelope. The city of Camden actually had more police officers under the county model than it did under the city model. So I just want to caution everybody whenever, whenever people talk about, oh, this city, you know, defunded, they abolished their police department. I don't know one city in the nation that, that has any size at all that has zero, zero police department. You know, that's, that's a needed thing in society. And I just want to caution everybody, caution everybody going forward on talking about, you know, complete abolition of, of a police department because that just doesn't happen in, in, in bigger cities.
Thanks, Bill. I'll give a chance for Noah, Beal or Willem to respond if you guys have any comments back to council and then we'll move to other, other comments.
Okay, yeah, thank you. So when I was researching that issue, I actually did see that. And I realized they also, they actually hired back most of the police officers that, that officers, officers that were temporarily laid off. And so I completely understand you can't leave a city without police force. That, that just doesn't happen. However, the main point I was trying to point out there was they shifted it to a system where the police officers can be held accountable directly by the citizens of Camden, New Jersey through a democracy. So that was the main point I was trying to make there. I'm sorry if I made that unclear.
Thanks, Willem. Mary Alice, you're up next. I just want to recognize that Sharice did join the meeting for the record.
Oh, thank you. I first want to say I'm really impressed with this presentation, with these people putting, pulling together all this stuff. It's a lot of work and I really appreciate you coming tonight. This is part of what I wanted to, I was hoping to hear tonight was a lot of different ideas on how we can work together to find solutions. I, I will say that I agree with a lot and I agree, I disagree with some. But I just wanted to thank you basically for, for coming and being well, so well-prepared. That's just.
I think, thanks, Mary Alice. If any council members want to touch on those topics briefly before we move on to the next group, Eric, I saw your hand and then Sharice.
So I just want to clarify what we did, what our council did with respect to the police budget. Because I don't think this was so clear in the news accounts. We didn't just cut the budget. We moved that amount that we cut into a, a dedicated line to, to plan, planning money for what the mayor has called One Door. A separate place, separate from the jail, where people who have, who encounter the police, who can't stay where they are, but they shouldn't go to jail because the problem is either substance abuse or mental illness, or they're victims of domestic violence. And the One Door is a facility to which they will be brought, which will have referrals and expertise to deal with those problems. So it's a, it's not a token. It is a start towards getting the police out of the social service and mental health business and letting them focus on the business of protection, of criminal protection.
Thanks, Eric. Sharice, everyone did get a chance to say a statement. I just realized you, because you joined late, you did not. Did you have something that you wanted to say or did you just want to respond to what was going on?
Um, right now I just want to respond because I'm gonna have to go and check on my mom.
Okay.
I just wanted to say I thought it was, that there were some good ideas that these young men presented. I liked the Coffee with a Cop. I liked the, also the more requirements regarding police officers getting to know, and I've talked to Bryant about this, maybe walking a beat to get to know their community that they're policing. And I think that those are great ideas and it wasn't one percent that was cut, also it was two. And, and like Jacob, Eric was saying that, you know, those monies will be, we're, we're hoping to funnel those into something I imagine that would be connected with the city because otherwise we're talking about dealing with a, a, a different entity, which is the public health area as far as mental health. I, and I do agree, I think that even now, and this is something that I was discussing with someone about how maybe police officers should also be more maybe less evaluative in, on some levels with, with nonviolent issues. And have to, for example, what happened in, in Atlanta recently, I felt very strongly if those police officers had just called the EMTs as soon as they saw the, the man behind the, the wheel of the car unconscious, because you don't know what's wrong with them. And they were, they were not in, and all they needed to do was just say, you know, we need EMTs here to check this guy out. And you could have easily have found out if he was under the influence or if he was in a diabetic coma or if he'd had a stroke or heart attack or something sitting behind the wheel of the car. That could have been totally alleviated just by doing something as simple as that. So, but you young gentlemen did, I, I heard your, your proposal, your, your information or your, your suggestions and your ideas, I thought it was compelling.
Thanks, Sharice, and thank you to Willem, Noah and Beal for bringing that to us this evening. All right, we're going to move, keep moving along here. It's seven.
Could I comment?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, it is.
You know, so there's been a discussion about coalescing community resources to address those who the police are interacting with, who have, should be redirected not to the criminal area, but to mental, mental health and psychological health and social health. And so the mayor is making a suggestion and we've learned that she's already working with Carl Hospital and Rosenkrantz and some of the other healthcare providers to form kind of a coalition for that. And I think that's an incredible first step. So I'd like to point this out, that, that, that service needs to have a home within the community. And right now we have a building in the downtown area that is being underutilized and might even be sold. And right now, the Urbana Civic Center, it's not in the greatest condition. But if there was a coalition who was brought together to find funding to create a home for this kind of service, and it's not apparently going to be in addition to the jail, the county jail, it's going to need a home. And we've got a building that might be converted into such a use. And it's only a block away from downtown and it's next to the Sheriff's Department and the courthouse. So I'm just going to recommend that the city consider using that property as a base for operation.
Cool, thanks, Dennis. All right, the next group I was told Naomi was going to come from Pain for Peace, but then I was told it may not have been heard and maybe someone else, if there is a representative from.
Jared, the mayor wants to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I didn't see you die in.
Just a quick response to Dennis. The group has already identified a home and will, and that information will be shared in the proposal. But I appreciate the suggestion.
Sure.
Cool. All right, I'm trying to go back to my attendees. If there was anyone from Pain to Peace and you wanted to raise your hands, Sarah, Megan, Minnie, Matt, Carol. I don't think any of you all were coming from that, but, and I know you guys had specific comments. If somebody does come on and knows that someone is here, just raise your hand and let us know. We'll next move to the G O, the Graduate Employees Organization. If we have a representative from there, I wasn't told who might be showing up to talk from them. But if someone's here and they would like to read the statement. Let's see, I got Aiden, whose hand just went up. Aiden, I unmuted you or let, let us know if you're from G O and you're wishing to speak.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I am from the Graduate Employee Organization at UIUC.
Great.
We at G O believe that the purpose of a labor union is not only to achieve fair wages and working conditions for our members, but also to build a better world for all. This historical moment requires us as graduate workers to speak truth to power and stand in solidarity with the people of Urbana. We are not interested in a community role in policing. We are not interested in discussions about changing police culture, training techniques or policy. We are interested in abolishing policing and building new systems that actually support people's safety, health and wellbeing. We are interested in eliminating the chances that police will brutalize, incarcerate or kill someone. We are interested in addressing the underlying problems of poverty and racism in our community, which policing does absolutely nothing to solve. Mayor Marlin has said that the budget will be revisited in September. In the meantime, how will the city council respond immediately to the call to defund, reduce and ultimately abolish the police? Rather than propose specific solutions about where we think the money should go, the G O believes the city should put the power of decision-making for the budget directly in the hands of people most impacted by police violence and disinvestment. To achieve this goal, we propose the following. At the public hearing on Monday, former city council member Danielle Chinowith proposed converting the recently passed budget into a quarterly model and instituting an ongoing participatory budgeting process in which residents might brainstorm ideas, propose projects that speak to local needs and then vote on project funding collectively. These projects must not be made from the top down, but decided directly and democratically by the communities most impacted by policing. Such projects could be the neighborhood people's assemblies mentioned in the Champaign County Anti-Racist Coalition's demands or emergency care response teams suggested by Ms. Chinowith. Community members have also proposed initiatives for housing, education, healthcare, childcare, non-coercive mental health services, ending the criminalization of unmet mental health needs and drug use and other services that support public health and safety. Whatever form they take, they should not be tied to policing in any way. For these changes to be effective, we must decouple the concept of policing from our ideas of safety and in doing so, transform our understanding of what public safety means. City council must use public resources to provide tools and support for all community members to participate in budget discussion. At the same time, city council cannot burden the community with responsibility for the institutions that exacerbate racism, sexism, homophobia, transphobia and lack of access to resources. Among other things, this means not working with ICE or other militarized agencies. Communities need spaces and resources to try new things like community-based education efforts or affordable housing. They need reprieve from punishing expectations for productivity and wealth generation to have the time and energy to talk about solutions and put work into community activities. They need city council support and accountability. And the city council and all city offices and departments should actively recruit and create conditions which are supportive for Black, Indigenous and other employees of color, especially those who are LGBTQ plus and or disabled. The composition of the city council is not reflective of Urbana, which reproduces racial inequality and oppression. Finally, we must recognize that no one aspect of. Finally, we must recognize that no one aspect of society exists in isolation, but that all systems and infrastructures are interconnected. Any approach taken by city council must commit to defunding and ultimately abolishing the police, continuing to provide support and space for local communities to decide how they want to help move Urbana toward genuine community repair and accountability. There is no one-size-fits-all approach. All structures of governance must reject all logics of surveillance, punishment and incarceration. Thank you.
Thanks Bijal. Uh just for council to note, we are uh fifty, fifty minutes in and that was our second piece of public input. So if you comments or questions, let's try and keep them as, as brief as possible so we can get as many folks in. Uh council, anyone have uh a response or question they wanted to ask Bijal? I'm sorry, Aiden. I'm sorry, somebody else's name. Uh not seeing any hands, any general uh comments on any of the issues that was brought up? Okay. All right. We, thank you uh Aiden for uh speaking uh and bringing those issues to us. All right, um air uh Eldress, um Linda Carr, Reverend Dr. Underwood in attendance. I received a question. They wanted to speak on behalf of the ministerial alliance. Go ahead and raise your hands if y'all are in here or Jason, you can hunt them down. See, we found
Dr. Underwood. Yeah.
Dr. Underwood, are you there? We'll give, we'll give, we'll give her a moment. Looking through my list for Melinda. Dr. Underwood, you're, you're unmuted. If you wanna go ahead and speak. So you're ra- raising her hand. So I think she hears us. Dr. Underwood, we uh, we can see you. If you can hear us, uh go, go ahead and unmute and go forward.
No. Doesn't look.
Okay. All right. We'll uh keep trying. Uh we'll, we'll, we'll come back again. Uh the next uh folks in, unless there was uh I'm not, I'm not sure if we got somebody from uh P P's here yet, uh but I'm gonna go ahead and go to uh Stop Police Violence C U with Bijal Patel. If you were uh in the audience, go ahead and raise your hands or Jason, if you see him, go ahead and get him ready to speak. Bijal, you have the floor.
Yeah, hi. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Uh is there a chance that you could um enable screen sharing so I could share a slide as well?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh Jason, can you pop him over to panelists? Okay, we are seeing what you got up there, Bijal.
I think you do need to uh unmute your microphone though, but we can see it.
There we go. Okay, so now you can see it, right?
Yep.
Go ahead. Great. So, so the slide is just a, a quick summary of the, the points I'm going to just say. Okay, so uh I'll just read my prepared statement then. So, hi, this is Bijal Patel, uh speaking on behalf of the group Stop Police Violence C U. So I'd like to discuss two very specific topics. So the first is to give our perspective on the Urbana Civilian Police Review Board and to briefly discuss the list of urgent recommendations that we've put together and circulated as petition. And then to give a very brief update on where we stand after the CPRB meeting yesterday afternoon. So before we start, I, I like to say that, yeah, this is just one uh specific aspect of a pretty large process. Uh but it is a critical aspect. Basically, no matter what policing looks like after, you know, all these teams go in, uh oversight of police by civilians is going to be critical. And right now, the CPRB is the board, which will handle um any kind of uh basically any kind of complaint from the public and it's, this is our, our method of oversight, basically. Okay, so uh I want to share the work that we're doing so far as a starting point for other community members and just try to draw attention, not just uh to the ca- for the council, but also for the community members who are listening. So as a quick introduction, so the city of Urbana has a civilian police review board, CPRB. It's basically a set of appointed members of the public who currently are intended to meet to review appeals of civilian complaints against the Urbana Police Department. So basically, if you believe you're victimized by the police, this is the body that's tasked with providing accountability. Since this creation, since two thousand and seven, the CPRB in Urbana has largely failed in its mission to exercise oversight of Urbana PD and to provide meaningful accountability for citizens. So alarmingly, the board has largely failed even to meet on a regular schedule and over the past few years, they've only issued responses to four complaints in their entire history. So in violation of their own ordinance, board members are untrained, have not delivered required public reports and have largely simply existed to give a veneer of respectability to an unaccountable system. So we've put together a thorough list of recommendations which anybody can view and read. Um so I initially had written by contacting me, but now, you know, from the slide, you can see this link is a change out of a petition. This isn't meant to incorporate everything. This is just what a few of us have put together as a sort of starting point. And we've provided this to CPRB and we're, we're happy to hear that they're starting to look at this and, you know, using that in their own considerations. Obviously, they suggested many of the same things that are on there, but it's a good place to get started. Uh so what I want to really quickly address with the rest of my time is, so one key issue that we're trying to address with these recommendations is that it's nearly impossible to get a complaint in front of the CPRB in the first place at this time. There are lots of ridiculous administrative barriers such as time limits on submitting forms that city staff have used to simply delay submission complaints or reject them outright before they're even seen by the board. So one key issue basically is that gatekeeping by the city staff defeats the entire purpose of the independence of the board. Secondly, the CPRB as currently formulated is largely powerless, even if they did follow the, their own ordinance. They're not able to subpoena officers for further discussion or can, or conduct investigations of any kind. And they're even banned from knowing the officer's names in the complaints that are filed. They keep no public records and they have not released statistics um in any meaningful way in the past. So we urge members of the public and council to read the petition and communicate the support or concerns to the CPRB board. So now a quick uh point on the meeting from last night. So last night, the CPRB board members and city staff held a meeting to discuss future plans. So the agenda and the video are online as always, but I wanted to mention just a few points. So at this stage, as one of the council members mentioned earlier, the CPRB is very focused on redefining its role and attempting to bring itself back into compliance with the ordinance. And so our group is a hundred percent in support of that. There were two really worrying points of discussion though that showed up in yesterday's meeting. And so we're urging the city council to pay attention to these and get involved with them. The first is that there's a currently situation where no CPRB board members have received the training that the ordinance says that they're required to have before they participate in the board. Basically, this sounds like a kind of meaningless administrative thing, but the CPRB board itself has decided to hold off on taking any binding votes until they resolve the situation, which means at least two weeks before their next meeting. So I urge the city council to intervene and make sure this is resolved ASAP. Until this happens, the CPRB can't really do anything. And secondly, at last night's meeting, there was a worrying suggestion by city staff to implement a sorting process for complaints to the CPRB where some fraction will be handled internally by city administration in Urbana PD. We're kind of shocked to see this because one of the main issues that's happening with CPRB right now is that they don't get all the complaints. And the majority of CPRB board expressed willingness to go along with this suggestion. So we're just urging council members and the public to make sure that it's clear to the CPRB that they will need to see all complaints and that they need to have decision-making power. So please pay attention to this going forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Bijal. Um, I do know that uh Mikail is uh the CPRB chair uh is in attendance, I believe. Uh if he wanted to raise his hand, if you had any comments, uh I see he did. You should get unmuted here in a moment. If Jason will click on you and uh Mikail, if you wanna offer any comments, we, we'd appreciate them.
Yeah, thank you, Jared. Can everybody hear me?
All right, you're, you're pretty quiet. Uh I, I got an earphone in so I can hear you, but I don't know if others can.
Not now?
There you go. Okay.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Uh, thank you for uh to Bijal for, for those comments uh for the petition and the group. Yeah, we are, we are doing what um we're trying to get ourselves back into compliance. I think that's accurate. Uh I think uh I don't want to contest sort of the essence of of that presentation because I think the essence of it is probably right on target. But there, there are some minor points that I think probably are worth uh correcting. We have, it, it, we have, for the four years that I've been on the board, we have served as an appeals board. So the only um complaints that we have seen apart from, well, the only complaints we've seen are those that have been where the complainant has submitted an appeal. So we have, we are moving toward and, and uh we are already, we are, we have already changed that so that a subcommittee of us will be looking at every single complaint that comes into the system. And I've been working with city staff to make sure that every complaint, no matter what it is, if it's that the law enforcement officer failed to come to a full stop at a stop sign and we literally have complaints of that nature. Uh at the moment, we will be looking at that, not as a full board. For the moment as a subcommittee and then uh with the idea that if there's something that the subcommittee sees that is a, of concern, uh will, they'll flag it and we'll review it as a full board the way that we have previously been reviewing appeals. Uh so, you know, we're looking at that. We're expanding our oversight, not contracting it. Uh but while we're expanding it, uh it makes sense to us. Uh and, and we, we're still in the process of gathering public input. We're still in the process of uh, you know, we haven't had a full discussion, uh but we, we are prepared to consider that some complaints uh are sorry, just got distracted by my dog who's not where he should be. That there are some complaints like a rolling stop, uh like uh, um like a speeding violation that are important uh and that we want some, you know, it's, it's good to have those complaints. It's good to get a response to those complaints. Uh and it's good for the CPRB to provide oversight over, you know, how many of those complaints are happening, how, how are they responded to? You know, what's happening, but it may not be something that uh even three people of the board need to be looking closely at. So that we can be looking more closely at any kind of use of force, uh at any kind of taser deployment, obviously an example of use of force. Uh but the sorts of things that I think community members are generally much more concerned about. Um and, and if that's not something that um, you know, if the public wants us to have you know, oversight over these more uh minor complaints as well, then, you know, I think we're certainly open to it. It just made sense for us to, given that we're expanding our oversight role, it made sense to us to say, well, how, you know, what sorts of things do we want to look at? Are there some things that we don't, at least um in, as they initially come through the system?
Okay. Thanks Mikail. Uh Bijal, did you uh want to uh respond and comment?
I'll just give a, a very quick response. So
Sure.
Uh, uh Dr. Lewinsky, I definitely think is a, is doing, we're trying to do the right thing and I appreciate his response here. Um, so one thing I just want to say is, so I won't, I won't get into very specific things about, you know, the organizational charts and things. Those I think we should discuss outside of this conversation and I'll definitely follow up with you. But something just to point out is, so the chair is a very reasonable guy. Please, everybody who's interested and who's watching, feel free to reach out to him. The main thing I'm trying to get across right now is just we need to make sure that everybody still pays attention and especially the council needs to make sure that they have an active role as this is developing. And so I appreciate Dr. Lewinsky's comments and definitely I will, I'll follow up with you on this before your next meeting.
Thanks Bijal. Uh any quick comments or questions from council members? Eric?
So I did submit a, a written set of points to the um CPRB meeting. I wasn't able to attend it, but I'll just recapitulate and some of them I think there's going to be universal agreement on. Um, I think that the CPRB should review all complaints. That the complainant should not have to appeal. Uh, I think CPRB should actually review all uses of force in taser deployment and other uses of force, whether or not there's a complaint. Uh, I think it's important to get a broad view of all of those and I would like the CPRB to take on a, an additional task for each complaint to construct a a restorative justice scenario for reconciling the conflicts that led to the complaint. And, and urge that that scenario be implemented. I think that could be very important in beginning to heal the wounds that we're trying to heal.
Thanks Eric. Uh quick other comments? Bill?
Yeah, um, uh Councilman Jacobson, could you just uh expand a little bit on that last point? So you said so, so you want a, a restorative justice lens to be used um on each complaint. Uh could you just give an example?
Sure. Um, there's a uh, a complaint that a police officer was behaved improperly and this could range from being simply rude to actually using, to being unnecessarily aggressive and physical. Um, so in addition to judging the validity of the complaint, there would, there would be ultimately a mediated conversation between the complainant and the officer in which each one would try to explain the perspective that they came to that encounter with. Because what is often happening here is that the police officer has one perspective and the complainant has a totally different perspective. Here's the most dramatic example. The police officer suspects that the complainant is armed. That suspicion turns out not to be true. The complainant knew that he or she was not armed. So will maybe believe that the police officer was just incredibly over-aggressive. The police officer in this case has a very different perspective. The loop should be closed so that at least they may not become reconciled. They may not come out of it being buddies, but they will at least have learned something about the perspective of the other party.
And, and who would you propose being the mediator? Somebody from the CPRB?
Um, you know, I, I think there are people who are expert in this, far more expert than I am in uh, in, in, in restorative justice as it's implemented. Uh, so I think that's, I think that's a, a specific level. That's a level of specificity that, that I, I would have to sort of defer to somebody who might be a, 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 a better authority on that, although I would be happy to research that and, and try to understand it in more detail than I do right now.
Thanks Eric. Thanks Bill. All right, uh we're gonna keep moving along unless anybody else has a real quick comment. All right, uh not seeing any. All right, so let's uh go ahead and uh jump back uh to the ministerial alliance. I'm gonna get Melinda Carr. You should be unmuted, Eldress Melinda Carr and I will also have to mute Dr. Underwood. Uh go ahead if you can, if you, if you want.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening. Um first, just wanted to thank um the council members who requested the special meeting, Jared Mill, Jared Miller, New Alice Lynn, Dennis Roberts, um and uh allowing the community to give input on this very important topic that has been going on for a little while. And just wanted to, as part of the Minister Alliance, so I'm the vice president, uh Eldress Melinda Carr, and I'm sorry you can't see me. Tried to get on, but um wasn't able to access my phone. Um, but just wanted to reiterate that uh the Minister Alliance are um concerned about the things that are happening and um, the letter that we had submitted on June eighth was read by the mayor. Um, I will try to go through some of the things, because I want to give time for other people who have may, may have issues as well. Um, we want to make sure that people understand that the Minister Alliance is is black and white ministers and some people refer to us as the Black Minister Alliance, but it's the Minister Alliance. We have black and white ministers as part of the ministry. We have black and white ministers as part of the ministry organization. Pastors, elders, ministers, evangelists and other clergy. And we want to be able to acknowledge all the ones in the community who have come forward. Because we are at this point, because people have come forward and been very courageous to bring things to the council. Individuals, organizations and not only now, it's been happening for a while. We have people like, for example, Daryl Cruz. And he shares some information, we'd like to be able to. Bring some information later after this meeting, because in a kind of short notice. But some of the things that have been shared with us. Data and information and details about proposals, so we would like to deserve the right to be able to bring information after this particular meeting. And it's going to take collaboration from all the different individuals and groups. And I know you have a lot thrown at you, council, council members. For trying to do what is right. I just wanted to say, today, just give me a minute. I was looking on at the news and then I saw that there's a bear on the loose. And the bear, the, the black bear has more rights than the individual. When you think about, they're protected by law, they cannot be hunted, killed or harassed. Unless there's imminent danger of threat to safety, to safety. And a bear has more rights and that, that shouldn't be. So I, I just looked at that and that really struck me and I wanted to say that before I kind of looked at our letter so we, if we can think about. We do need. Police force. For protection and to serve people. To take care of people, we need to get back to that concept. So that people are not fearful and people, a trust has been broken. And that's what people feel, a trust has been broken in, in our community. Aliyah Lewis was captured not only by police body camera, but social media. Someone stepped out and showed us a different point of view, just like the George Floyd, Floyd video. But there are others who were not captured on video that we don't know about. So that's only because that's been brought forward, we don't know what else is out there. People who have been possibly brutalized, so I want to say that. Some of the things in the letter that we submitted, he said a public outcry is heard. We, we continue in our commitment to advocate against racial, racial injustice, or we can say white supremacy, we, we read that throughout. In the past several weeks. He again grieves over the loss of black lives that mattered, George Floyd and Minnesota, countless other black lives, including. Ahmaud Arbery, Breonna Taylor, Eric Gardner and Michael Brown have been lost. Due to excessive force, a cruel and unusual punishment. Leading to death caused by a police officer or by a citizen with racial prejudice. We acknowledge the very courageous acts of local individuals of all races in Champaign, Urbana, who have stepped up. Served as, as watchdogs, providing videos to the public and speaking out during public input. Relating to the arrest of Aliyah Lewis on April 10th. And exposing critical areas of misconduct, violations and lack of oversight. Within the city of Urbana, the police department and the civilian police review board. In addition, we acknowledge and support recent efforts of the NAACP and other community organizations to hold the city of Urbana. And Urbana Police Department accountable for the excessive use of force. Leading up to the arrest of Aliyah Lewis on April 10th. The NAACP has called for an, an internal affairs investigation, you know, that's in the works in this case. And it's holding Urbana Police Department accountable. Now, the 10 shared principles were adopted, but we know there, there's more to be done. Besides those principles, there are things that need to be done to, of course, to build relationships and trust between the police and the black community, but. The policies have to be looked at, we heard, I was at the meeting, I heard what the principals and what was talked about. The policies have to be looked at, there are changes that have to be looked at in, in a more detailed way. Because the ten principals will not take care of the issue of the oversight that needs to be done. The changes that need to be done individually in the department or the officers and how they respond to citizens in the community. So there's still work to be done, we appreciate the ten principles and we know there are other work, there's other work that has to be done because it's still at the. Preference of the, the police department in the, the city still has to look at things and how they should be implemented. The community has not been silent on the issue of injustice. And I mentioned, which I did not have in the letter on June 8th, but there have been some updates that you've received from Daryl Cruz. Some very detailed. Action items that should be considered when you have them before you, if you don't have them now, it's been shared, it's been shared with you and we have seen those as well as part of the alliance. But we would like to have some time to look at them and review them as well as, as other proposals that we, we have before us. In 2014, organizations publicly announced, publicly denounced the use of military stout assault rifles. And you see that a part of what was going on with Aliyah Lewis. So that, that's not new and we find ourselves facing those issues because they have not been dealt with. There's not been oversight, if things have not, people feel like things have not been taken seriously. In 2015. We collaborated with the CU citizens, Daryl Cruz was a part of that because that's the same report. That he's dealing with now in, in 2020, 2019, the data, Urbana, Doc Traffic Stop Data Task Force, which was formed back at that time. But we're still looking at some of the same issues that need to be reviewed. And we need to take, and that's why we're having this meeting and I'm so grateful that we're doing this. Putting in place safeguards to help. Stop the abuse, stop the harassment, the type of things that are happening to help citizens become more. Trust, trust, trusting to the relationship they have with the, the, the police, working with the police. When police, when all police officers, we need to identify the criteria for determining when police officers are abusing their, their authority. Against citizens, the rights of citizens, unlawful search, seizure or harassment by police officers. Putting in place safeguards to make the process more transparent, to avoid, to avoid the fear of reprisal, of finding complaints. And recognizing the code of silence that exists within police departments among police officers. And putting in place, and we say in here, the democratically elected, not appointed police board. Why? Because sometimes the boards become co-opted. When they've been there for a while, if they're appointed, sometimes they're appointed with a motive. And they may not be able to act objectively or hold the official accountable because they become a rubber stamp. We don't want rubber stamps, we want people who are very courageous and able to hold whoever it is accountable, if not, they should not be there. The board, the board should have authority to review all cases, not just upon appeal. And with subpoena, subpoena power, I attended most of the meeting last night for the review board. And Champaign has subpoena power, next door, our sister city. They have subpoena power. So I think that should be looked at, if this board is really going to be a serious board. And do what we envision as a community for it to do. Is hold those who are misusing, misusing or. Causing harassment, harassment or causing abuse for the citizens, if they're doing, not doing their job appropriately, I just say that. Then they should be reviewed, they should be looked at, there should be a way to know. This review board should be able to know a way to track, it should be able to track. As I was listening at the meeting, it should be able to track some kind of code to show that there's a pattern with the individual police. Then something should be done, it shouldn't be repeated over and over again.
Ms. Carr, Ms. Carr, I, I'm sorry, my, my job is kind of to keep track of time going on here, I was wondering if you'd be able to share just some final thoughts. I'm sorry, I'm just, I have like an hour and a half already into the meetings, I just want to make sure everybody had a chance.
Okay.
So do you have any final thoughts that you can share?
Okay, some final thoughts, I'll share though.
Thank you.
So, thank you. To. Make sure that. Citizens are able to come forward with any complaints and they feel. There's no fear of doing that, that there's, there's an open process. And there's one thing I wanted to mention about the voluntary mediation, what does that actually mean, that's on the form, what does that mean? When, when citizens doing that, there's some things that we need to define so that the citizen understands what they're doing. And to that process, so I'll say that and I'll leave it for someone else.
Okay, thank you, Eldress. Any quick comments or questions from council? Or the Eldress? Not seeing anybody raising their hands, so we're gonna hop onto my last. Group and then we're gonna start going to some folks who are in the meeting with hands raised. Briefly before we pop into our last topic and, you know, these topics are relative, so if you have. Questions or concerns, they probably are justified at both, but we'll go ahead and move on after this last group and some individuals. Justice Brolea, Danielle Chinowitz, if you are in the room. Alright, you should be able to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
This is the wrong Danielle.
Sorry, other Danielle. I've got Danielle Chinowitz, I see your hand raised. Alright Danielle, you should be able to unmute.
Yes, hello. Hi.
Hello.
Danielle.
Sorry, other Danielle.
I represent the support and strategy group that formed after police brutalization of Ms. Aliyah Lewis. On Friday, April 10th, we have operated under the banner of Justice for Aliyah. Ms. Lewis had her first court date this last Tuesday, nearly a hundred members of the public showed up early in the morning to support her. And called for her charges to be dropped, they represent a fraction of the many hundreds of residents, professors, cooks. Public officials, organizers, business people, service workers, students and nonprofit leaders. All telling you, city leaders and the state's attorney, that police actions are not in line with our expectations. And you must withdraw city support for these charges. Unfortunately, we have had zero progress, Ms. Lewis, a 21-year-old black woman just starting her adult life. Was told she still faces all four felony counts and many, many years in prison, in excess of 10 years. Council did raise concerns and the mayor and city staff did initiate an investigation and plan a forum about the NAACP shared principles. We want to raise our voice that we're very concerned about the limits of public participation and voice in this process. Public input has been curtailed at meetings, the hiring of the investigator did not go through a public process with a vote by council. Where the documents would be posted online for the public to see and comment on. We were told the forum will be invitation only, which is unacceptable. The special meeting today is the first time we've had an open conversation, we want to thank council members Miller and Wu for organizing this. We demand the so-called public forum be truly public. Investigation and all its related documents should be made fully public. This is a key political moment where many people who have never spoken in pub, before public bodies are speaking up, it's very important that we listen. I appreciate, as a side, I appreciate Marilyn May or Marlin's pledge and smiled politely today. To quote tackle disparities revealed in the traffic stop data by focusing squarely on the policies and practices that created them. And her apology for not focusing on traffic stops earlier, thank you. We are glad the scope of the investigation is not limited to a review of the internal investigation only. But also police policies and practice, a look at the allegation that police asked the Facebook videographer to take down his video. And provides for community input through stakeholder interviews. We want to be clear that for the investigation to be considered valid. The investigators must meet with individuals and groups who have really been putting the work and sweat. Into police reform and oversight for many years. This includes representatives from CU Citizens for Peace and Justice, including Daryl Cruz, whose name was mentioned. Marjale Miller, the Ammonses, HV Neighborhood Transformations, Paint to Peace, Our Young People. Champagne County Anti-Racist Coalition, which is a new coalition. CU showing up for racial justice, the Graduate Employees Organization, First Followers, NAACP, Stop Police Violence CU. End me with the videographers and our group. They must review public input regarding the arrests since April 17th. And they must watch the tape of April 27th, not just read the report, we insist. That they must watch that council meeting, they should review the history of racial profiling data in Urbana. Daryl Cruz has summarized it well, that work is done, we should have access to all, they should have access to all the original CPRB complaints. Lastly, we want the council to understand the political moment we, we are in, the police structure as we have inherited it is not working. This is made obvious to us when Chief Seraphin showed us nearly an hour of footage of a young woman being punched, hit in the ribs with a knee. A rifle pressed into her back, told to act like a lady, arms already handcuffed, hyperextended, forced into a police car, shackled and spit-hooded. And then we were told, all good here, that calls into question his judgment, the judgment of the CIO sitting next to him, the police policies as a whole. Aliyah's statement is that she does not want this to happen to other people, unless we interrupt this and forge a new path, it will happen again. I'm just gonna end with a few questions because this is a forum in which we can ask those questions. What is your commitment to righting the wrong done to Aliyah? What will you do to address use of force and police policies that claim, quote, no wrongdoing? Will the council pledge to modernize the CPRB ordinance to give it the powers it needs to be a true tool of police accountability? Will you claim your legislative role and not leave it up to the administrators to gatekeep and render the CPRB useless? We're very concerned about the meeting last night and the tendency towards that. And lastly, what is your long-term plan to establish and fund a parallel structure? Outside of the police department and its FOP contracts to respond with supportive services to people in need? I want to thank you for your time and thank you so much for hosting this conversation.
Thanks Danielle, did any council members want to briefly comment or ask questions?
I'll briefly comment if that's okay, I, I was trying to write down quickly what Danielle was talking about. I think that, I just want to say, and I'm not going to speak on behalf of all the council members, but purely just my summarization of all the conversations we've had during the city council member. Sorry, city council meetings, I feel that all of my colleagues are staunchly behind reforming and, and bringing up to date where the CPRB board needs to be. They've been doing a lot of work and so I look forward to what that review board can come to us back and say, this is how we think it should be, so we can have a broader conversation. The second thing that I think we've all talked about is response, a different response group for different types of calls. And I think that the vote that we had on Tuesday night for the budget shows a little bit that we're willing to, to start looking at how are we going to fund that? We don't have the policy yet, we don't have the, the group form yet, but a lot of those conversations are going. And I personally am really strongly in favor of this, of this model, so I just wanted to bring up those two things.
Thanks, Mary Ann. Danielle, did you want to respond at all of those comments briefly?
Just, I'm in, the, the, one door has actually been in progress for a long time and it is with. And it is within the police structure. It is a first step that is is not new, although we are um starting to launch it. Um and there's been a lot of work with that. I think I just want to be clear that our position is that it's really important to think about a parallel structure outside of the police department. Um and to um think about the flexibility that you get from that and really ask yourself the question, when do you want someone with an assault rifle to show up? When is that appropriate? And think of all the times that we don't want that and think about and and someone with a gun? When, how can we develop different response structures? Um so that people feel safe in calling those response structures and can and can uh get support from it. Thank you so much.
Thanks Danielle. Uh any other quick comments from council for Danielle or just questions for each other? Uh Dennis, go ahead.
Yeah, I really appreciate your uh interest Danielle. You've always been a really strong voice for uh social justice in the community and uh we appreciate your work as uh the township supervisor as well because a lot of the um ultimately probably a lot of the funding that's going to be initiating some of the programs that we see seek to change will probably be coming through the township budget as well for supervision and distribution. And yes, the independent review is going to be wider. It's not going to be really narrow. It's going to have a rather wide scope and I think it's going to be very satisfactory to find out not only um about particular experience that was recorded by video cameras, but also um generally how uh our policies stack up compared to national goals and some of the new trends um of understanding police work. So I would say uh bear with us. Um we have to create some new and original pathways and we can't just bring them up you know, in ten, in three weeks or something like that, but we're going to be working on it.
Thanks Dennis. Uh I'll offer just one uh brief CPRB comment that I wanted to uh say to Mikhail while you're here uh listening. Uh Mikhail and uh all others who are considered on this, I would strongly and uh vehemently recommend that uh you guys ask for an opportunity to give a presentation on the current status to the council. Uh when we're uh so many of us are watching uh meetings, we're certainly not allowed to uh uh attend or offer comments uh while you guys are discussing things, but if you were able to come with the vice chair and yourself uh to council uh and give us a presentation, we'd be able to talk to you about some of our ideas and in further detail. And it's possible we may have another uh special city council meeting just for the topic because it is uh complex and a lot of issues to discuss, so. That was my last one and I think uh we are through uh the rest of our groups and we're gonna go to selecting a couple of folks before uh we move on to uh future ideas or future actions on existing concerns. So uh again, uh we're gonna.
For just a second, I'm just keeping track of time. So it's eight thirty-four and I am in full support of at, you know, letting some individuals talk, but I just want individuals to know that I'm gonna start trying to keep track of time. I'm not trying to cut off anybody, but just want them to be aware.
And folks will have the chance in the next topic to uh discuss as well. Um so I, you know, this is uh existing concerns. We're trying to do uh future actions, future suggestions in the next topic. Uh so if you would prefer to speak in one or the other uh when you're uh called, uh just make that known if you'd like to address an existing concern or if you're uh liking to go to future topics. Alright, so first up, I've got uh Megan, uh I'm showing on my screen and you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Carol Spindel is gonna make a statement for the ACLU.
Oh, okay, Megan, if you want to hold for just a moment, uh we'll we'll let uh Carol go ahead and go for ACLU. Carol, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. Champagne County ACLU is an organization of nearly two thousand member households and we strongly support structural police reform in Urbana. And we're pleased to be part of this local dialogue and the larger statewide one to reimagine public safety, to make it more effective and more equitable. We can start by asking which rules we want our police to enforce. Transparency is essential. We commend the mayor and council for the independent investigation and the steps they have taken to make it easier for community members to file complaints. But we urge also an accessible and transparent process for the public to access the complaint records of every officer. The civilian police review board should be strengthened and it could serve as an important conduit for communication between the public and the police. But ultimately, it is the responsibility of the elected mayor and council to hold the police accountable. We stand solidly with the NAACP and we commend the mayor, the council and the chief for committing to the Ten Shared Principles Initiative. The department should regularly release information on how many officers have completed the program and any other de-escalation training. Beyond that, it is essential to revise the use of force policy so that it includes a step-by-step mandate for de-escalation. Disciplinary policies must also be revised so officers who do not follow the new policies face concrete consequences. We urge Urbana to be the model community it can be and take out the ambiguous union language that makes it difficult to discipline officers who have not acted professionally. We also urge a policy for body and dash cam video release when force has been used. We continue to urge the elimination of military hardware and we feel that accountability is the only way to have pervasive, sustainable change. Finally, we want to say in a democracy, to be harassed, intimidated, or humiliated even in small ways by your own public safety police officers is a terrible betrayal of the constitutional contract between the people and the police. To treat black and brown people as suspects and white people as innocents who deserve protection undermines our democracy. It has to end now in Urbana. The police chief must change the culture. The chief must hold officers accountable. Our elected representatives, the mayor and council, must hold the chief accountable for policing that is equitable and effective for our city and our time. And finally, the voters must hold the mayor and council accountable. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Carol. Uh any quick uh comments for Carol? Uh go ahead, Bill.
Um yeah, Carol, I I know uh ACLU and other groups too have urged us to release body cam footage when there's been use of force. And um there's also concern about the way the body cam footage was used at our council meeting on a couple, I think, April twenty-something. Um when we had the presentation from the police on that. And there was concern that that violates constitutional rights. I know when when the officers record body camera footage, they are supposed to turn off at certain times or or it wouldn't be released if it's within, you know, someone's home or something like that. Have you had an occasion to to look into that at all as far as the violation of constitutional rights um and when it comes to um body, police body cam footage?
Well, it's a complicated topic and the video release policy, there are some exceptions in it. I did look at the one for New Orleans and I did look at the one for Chicago and there are some exceptions written into it when you don't or cannot release it because of certain pending uh judicial things or certain things. I couldn't cite them all now, it's, but there are some exceptions. It's it's not it's not true that all video cam footage can be released. Um we did pass the presentation by our legal staff at the ACLU of Illinois. Um and while uh we found the presentation problematic in many ways, it was not illegal in any way.
Okay, thanks. I I guess that's something we'll just have to um find our way through.
Car- Carol, if uh you're, if that can, did you, would you have access to that conversation with them where they reviewed it and uh advised that and be able to follow up with us on why they believe uh it was it wasn't in violation?
Uh, I might be able to to get them to give specifics on that. I don't know. Um basically, the legal staff looks at things and they look to see if there's anything actionable that falls within ACLU sort of action uh priorities and they didn't.
Okay. Uh well, we we'd be interested to hear the perspective if it's uh available at all.
Okay, we're always interested in more dialogue and we really appreciate um, you know, the the possibility to participate and continue this conversation.
Thanks, Carol. Alright, um any other quick comments or questions for Carol? Okay, we'll recognize just a couple more folks before we move. Uh Megan, you are next in line. And you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hey, can you hear me? Sorry, it took a second for it to pop up.
You you are good.
Cool. Alright, my name is Megan McDonald and I'm from Ward Five. Before I ask what I'm about to ask, I would like to say that if you don't respond directly now, as is your chance, I will go on publicizing these troubling facts and pushing for your resignation or loss in any upcoming election that you may wish to win. I will show up to every city council meeting and speak. I will gather more and more people and make every meeting go until eleven PM and on. Protests will keep going, et cetera. Today, I will only take about four to five minutes and I ask that you give me my space to say all that as I am speaking in direct support of twenty-seven people who couldn't be here. So anyways, my ask is simple. Email State Attorney Julia Reitz and demand she drop the charges for Aliyah Lewis and the twenty-six protesters from May thirty-first. Say you stand in solidarity with them and that their lives matter. Right now, after this meeting, if you think, oh, it's not my place, you're wrong. If you say Black Lives Matter, but then don't follow through with what I'm asking, you're pretty hypocritical. Just a little background information on the person I'm asking for you to write to. Julia Reitz was offered her first job in the Champagne County State's Attorney Office by the state attorney at the time. That person was Tom DeFonis. Tom DeFonis is now the judge who will be retiring in November. He's also the same judge that leaned back in his chair with Reitz to his right and seemingly delighted to together charged these twenty-six young black folks with life-threatening felonies. The ones that were arrested on May thirty-first in reflection of the um what happened at the mall, but these people were there much later. Anyway, we already know how Julia Reitz values black life. She doesn't. She's the same state's attorney who said that the officer who killed unarmed fifteen-year-old Kewan Carrington, that that officer acted appropriately. She's the one who said the officers who brutalized, stripped and tased Aliyah Lewis were acting accordingly. I'm not going to stand by as you, the press, the mayor, chief Seraphin, chief Cobb, Tom DeFonis and Julia Reitz changed the narrative and the routes of these people's lives. Most of these young people are parents. Some of them have already been evicted or lost their job, even when they are presumed innocent until found guilty. Dennis Roberts, why didn't you share the special city council meeting on the Historic East Urbana Facebook group? Those are your constituents. Why are all your email responses the same and seemingly ingenuine because of that? Why did you vote to reappoint Chief Seraphin? I and many people do not find his leadership at all effective or acceptable. The way he lied recently in response to Jared Miller's push about how the current police department does not followed the NAACP guiding principles. He says they do. End of explanation. End of conversation. Why did none of you push that? Do you not want a target on your back? Do you not want to feel like black people feel every day? When Ed from the Illinois Association of Police Chiefs said that what happened to George Floyd would never happen in Illinois, why did none of you speak out? Mayor Marlin lied about the phone call related to Aliyah Lewis. The police lied about the phone call, the press lied about the phone call. You all lied. They showed footage of her being interviewed the next day without her consent. Marlin and company have effectively cost Aliyah the right to a fair trial, which may very well cost her her freedom. Why have you not spoken out in solidarity with Ms. Lewis? I want this continuing abuse and deaths of young black people in this community to stop. I don't want to see these young folks stressed another day or to go to trial at all. I don't want to get it to get that far. These young people deserve life. They deserve freedom. What is with our society, especially here in Champagne, Urbana? Obsession with punishment and ending lives, whether it be directly or indirectly. I'm here today on behalf of these young people who are too scared or busy with the violence that this system is putting them through, even while being out on bail. Traumatized by being maced, kettled in, harassed and threatened by the police in riot gear cocking their rifles, escalating, not de-escalating, police from all over as well, not just Champagne police, not just Urbana police, campus police, Mohammed police. You think preparing for a war is how your citizens and police foster amicable relationships? The only way to right this violent wrong is by dropping the charges. I am here because it is disgusting that Julia Reitz and Judge DeFonis would declare their bond so high and then tell them, and I quote, "You will be here until your court date," assuming because they are young and black, they wouldn't be able to afford to get out before then. A white Urbana man was just reported of a hate crime in our town. It was declared officially as disorderly conduct and his bond was only a hundred dollars. Meanwhile, people just standing near the Burger King on Prospect on May thirty-first were charged with burglary felony charges. It cost these young black protesters and these profiled, easy-to-blame black civilians one thousand to five thousand dollars to get out of a cramped, dirty cell during COVID nineteen. There were no beds, there were no biohazard bags given for menstrual items. They thought they were going to be in there for weeks based on the fact that they didn't know how they'd get the money to get out. And Judge DeFonis have lied to them. The Champagne County Bailout Coalition came to dissuade them emotionally and monetarily to get them out of there. Where were you? Where are any of our officials besides falling asleep at council meetings and popping up for photo ops at police sanctioned protests? Why are you, time and time again, ignoring the fact that these people in charge above you in the hierarchy are connected and police advocates? No, I'm going to finish. Talk in the next one.
Mary Alice, we we should probably just let her finish.
I didn't mute her. I was just trying to interject something.
Okay.
What? I would like, I would like you to um tell us your final thoughts, please.
I'm gonna finish it. It's almost done.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Why are you, time and time again, ignoring the fact that these people in charge above you in the hierarchy are connected and police advocates? Carol Mitten, what is her job exactly? To protect the police department's budget, to hinder any progress the CPRB could make? Just a recap of what Carol did last night at the CPRB. She didn't let them vote to make any improvements because apparently the city has failed to give them adequate training. This has been a case for a decade and the board itself has complained about it, which is an administrative administrative problem. She is the city administrator. Also too, she suggested that the CPRB might not want to consider all violations of the Urbana Police Department policy to be able to consider misconduct. I suppose her job is to be the connection between the mayor and the police department, so Mayor Marlin can try to escape accountability and it works out, since Carol Mitten hardly has to face the public. Why are we ignoring that Mayor Marlin is endorsed by the Urbana Fraternal Order of Police? Which might explain some of her hesitance to cut the budget and her use of feminism as a screwed-up reason why we should cut two percent instead of four percent. In fact, race or gender does not make a difference in police brutality statistics. Why are we ignoring that Julia Reitz is married to a cop? That she lives on the outskirts of Urbana on some horse farm, completely disconnected from our community? Why does she essentially have the final say on who gets to be a participant in our community? My final thoughts. I'm over all this abuse of power and all the people who decide to be complacent around her. I'm tired of these meetings. What is the point? To pat yourselves on the back? We're tired of this. It's a lot of work. What I'm saying right now, Mary Alice, is a lot of work, so I'm gonna finish it. We have been coming to you since April tenth with comments, concerns and suggestions and other organizations doing the work for years before this, pushing for no new jail, no more cash bail bonds, no bigger police budget, no reappointment, no fake accountability projects like the CPRB where people can only join if they are appointed by the mayor. So many intelligent people have been coming to you with suggestions and demands for weeks. What are you going to do right now? I hope you really hear us today and hear how hurt and tired we are. And I'm a white woman. I will wrap up my comments based on that fact and ask you to use your power and influence to pressure the mayor to make immediate amendments to the police budget and to man Julia Reitz drop the charges against Aliyah Lewis and these twenty-six protesters and let them have a chance for the future. Email Julia Reitz and say you stand in solidarity with Aliyah and the twenty-six protesters and you won't stand for this racist characterization of them. Say you demand the charges to be dropped and that you stand in solidarity with them. If not, we will vote you all out. We will vote her out. We will not give you one more moment of having the privilege to ignore or minimize this. So I guess my question is, what do you think of these relationships? The that they obviously have strong biases and years-long relationships. The city administrator and people on the review board having to be appointed by a cop-endorsed mayor. What do you think about that? What are you going to do right now to support these protesters and Aliyah, to allow them to have full, free lives? That's not something I can be patient about or not say. There you go.
Megan?
Thanks, Megan. Sure, go ahead, Sharice.
Megan, how long have you lived here?
Ten years.
Ten years, okay, that's great. Um Megan? I can empathize with how you feel on some level. And being a white woman, you are, have all the freedom, let freedom ring. That's wonderful. You've been able to do that for as long as you've been on this planet. But I don't know half of what you're talking about when you say that twenty-seven young men or and women were arrested for standing in front of Burger King. standing in front of Burger King. Could you please, um, elaborate on that?
I'm not sure how that relates to my race, but
Well, you just said it. It must have been
Yeah, it's because I'm a white woman and I'm tired, but I can't imagine the plight of the people that were standing there. There were 95% black people
I'm asking you because I wasn't there and apparently you were.
Yeah, I have
Could you elaborate on it?
Yeah, there were 26, 27 people arrested on May 31st. One of them was ROR. They were held for 48 hours without bond because the police shut down the courthouse at noon in fear of what the protest on that Monday was going to turn out. So they held them for 48 hours. I would, there is no proof. I, anyway, what are you asking? There were people that were arrested around 7:30, 8:00 PM. And the press showed footage of people breaking into the mall and stealing stuff around 3:00 PM. They didn't catch anybody that did it at 3:00 PM. They arrested people in the aftermath to justify their militant presence.
Oh, okay. No, I just wanted an understanding of, because that's not something that I had seen or, or heard. No, I didn't see the news with them on there.
Yeah, because the, I mean, it was from three weeks ago, but then press very much did. And the very, the press and everybody responded like, these are the bad protesters. These are the looters. And like, that's what the narrative became.
And they were all black?
95. There was two white men from Indiana that were arrested. One was ROR'd and one was charged with a $50,000 bond.
Okay, and, and so, and they were just standing, not doing anything?
Some, I cannot, this is an ongoing court case as they are still charged. So I'm not going to speak about anything that could get them in trouble.
But then how can I understand what you're talking about if you can't give me the information?
You Yes, I think, what do you want, what do you want exactly? Tell you whether or not some people actually took stuff or actually didn't. Does that mean they deserve felony charges?
I'm not saying that they necessarily, all I'm saying, well, did they? If they did, did they?
The body cam footage, that's up to their lawyers to find out, but from my firsthand account, which none of you have talked to these people, I have talked to these people. I am actually offering them support and empathy. And all I'm saying is that they were overcharged, wrongly charged, and their lives are going to be irrevocably changed if Julia Reitz and Tom DeFonis continue with these felony charges. There were judges in Cook County that gave political protesters theft as opposed to like people that were supposedly looting. They give them theft instead of burglary because they recognize the systemic racism that may lead to people being angry or to looting or stealing for resources that they may not have access to. So either way, I don't, I'm gonna end that, but you can ask whatever more questions you want. I'm here on behalf of them. I've met a lot of them. I was there with the bailout coalition when they all were bailed out.
Mm-hmm.
It was a very life-changing experience and I just want them to have a chance at having full lives. Because none of them deserve what is happening to them right now and what did happen to them.
Okay, my, my other question is, um, and maybe you, maybe you didn't see the, the, the Facebook advertisement about going to the mall and bringing your books and your backpacks?
Right, I did see that. I also saw rumors of the Klan being in town that day. So I think a lot of people, even well-meaning white people that would show up to protest. Usually there was so much misinformation going on that day that people didn't know whether to show up or not. And I think if a lot more white people had showed up that day, it wouldn't have turned out the way it did. Uh, and there's no proof of where that flyer came from. There's just a person they're trying to pin it on. So unless they can research where exactly that image was created, which I believe is a violation of privacy, which we can see how that court case turns out. But, yeah, I don't
It was a public sighting. That's why I'm saying it wasn't just But I just wanted, I just wanted to understand, Jared.
I know, I know. I get you. I get you.
Wanted to understand.
Yeah, there's plenty of information to back up what I've said and you can email me personally if you want to talk more.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Megan. Uh, thanks, Sharice. I will, uh, we're gonna go ahead and hop into our next topic, which was, uh, people's suggestions about things going forward and things we could do in the future that we haven't considered yet. Uh, we'll, we'll keep the floor pretty open for folks if, if they have, uh, concerns that they would like to, uh, get to us. Sarah Nixon, I've got you next on my list. And I, you should be able to unmute yourself, Sarah, if you're there.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Sarah.
I commend the council members who organized this meeting and for inviting our public engagement. You guys are, again, doing the right thing. I just want to say two things. One, I have personal experience and I have data analysis and recommendations in collaboration with experts on the issue of family violence and gender bias at the Urbana Police Department. And Jared Miller invited me to give a presentation on this issue this evening or at a subsequent meeting. So I will be presenting at the subsequent meeting and thank you very much, Mr. Miller and your colleagues for giving me this voice. And by extension, voice to a multitude of victims and survivors like me who are routinely silenced and revictimized by law enforcement mechanisms rooted in woman-hating myths as ugly as those that drive racism and an agenda to shield abusers who are powerful from investigation and exposure. I personally have experienced this with the Urbana Police Department and with the University of Illinois Police Department and with the FBI. And I will never stop speaking up about this and exposing the truth and the failures. My goal is safety and accountability for the most vulnerable in our society. There are solutions and the open door could be a threshold to solving problems. Courageous police department internal cleanup and education is also key. Now, my second point and the most important thing I can say at this meeting tonight is about Hillard Heinz, the Chicago firm hired by the city to conduct the investigation of the police assault of Aaliyah Lewis. Of course, law enforcement involved in this misconduct are eagerly awaiting the Hillard Heinz report. Members of the Urbana community have been looking into Hillard Heinz's reputation and track record. The body of media coverage on Hillard Heinz exposes the firm as anything but neutral and independent. Exposes them as essentially a front for advancing fraternal order of police interests, not those of the victims of police misconduct. We are learning that senior staff at Hillard Heinz are embroiled in accusations of high-level police misconduct cover-up. The firm is tight with police departments and with the union, but has no discernible respect from nor engagement with victim advocacy groups. An article by Tracy Siska, Director of the Chicago Justice Project, says this, quote, "If you want a firm that has a history of leading by example, then I cannot imagine why anyone would pay Hillard Heinz to consult on such issues unless, of course, you are trying to find experts in burying complaints and ignoring communities." Council members, this is deeply disturbing and discouraging to those of us who hoped for transparency and fairness in this process and who hoped for a firm that will not gloss over police misconduct. No meaningful consultation was conducted in choosing this firm in the first place. And so we ask that the city count, the city cancel this contract before the whitewash gets underway. And we ask that the selection process begin again and be carried out with transparency and integrity this time. In closing, I want to acknowledge the silent men and women who wear their blue uniform and badge faithfully and who are as disgusted as we are at misconduct, corruption, and at abusers who masquerade as cops while ensuring protection of fellow abusers. The profession of law enforcement attracts heroes and it attracts also villains. I am with those who support the heroes so they can weed out the villains. For this undertaking, we must look unflinchingly to at the role played by the powerful police union. We know that they are there behind the scenes. It's time to shed light on that darkness.
All right, thank you, Sarah. Uh, any quick comments or questions for Sarah? Or which, or the point she brought up? Go ahead, Dennis.
Well, okay, so this is kind of news to us. We were, the city council was not really involved in the selection of the review commission or the reviewers. Uh, seemingly they had a very high recommendation and they offered a wide-ranging review program. But we're gonna have to make some more looking, we have to look at this word carefully, I believe. And I understand that we have not yet signed a contract with them. Certainly it hasn't come before the city council. I don't think so. All right, we'll, we'll take notice of what you're saying and, um, if you can direct us to some of these uh, in this pieces of information about uh, how the, uh, justice community or the NAACP or the ACLU have reviewed this organization. Uh, it'd be worth our knowing. Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. Uh, I, I was also, Dennis, gonna bring, bring that up, uh, as well that, uh, I thought it was a little odd that the, uh, uh, commission or whoever it was that was gonna do the independent investigation was just told, we were told who it was. I mean, I know we were asked to provide questions and things that we would be concerned about. And I'm, I'm sure that they tried to take those things into consideration, but I think it was probably something that was a little too important to not at least bring by council to let us know instead of just telling us who it was gonna be. So I was surprised to hear that, uh, as well. Anyway, uh, that, that's my comment. Uh, any other, uh, council members? Comments, questions? Okay. Uh, thanks, thanks. Sarah, did you, uh, uh, go ahead, Sarah?
Just really quickly, so in response, I'd be happy to send to you, uh, some, you know, references, links, and I would encourage you to contact Mr. Tracy Siska, the Director of the Chicago Justice Project, um, yourselves and perhaps schedule a conversation with him. And, um, but there is abundant information available that is critical of this firm and that is, uh, very concerning. So as I said, I'd be happy to share, um, references with you if you give me 24 hours. I've got a lot on my plate, but I will compile that and send that to you. And I would welcome information that contradicts these findings. Thank you.
Uh, thanks, Sarah. Uh, there was, uh, another Sarah who, we're, I know we're going through the list of, uh, folks who had comments, uh, but I did have one other request from somebody that I just saw raised their hands who had asked to speak earlier, and that is Sarah Hoag. If, uh, we could get her unmuted. Sorry, I'm sorry if I'm saying that wrong.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go, go ahead, Sarah.
It's Hoag.
Hoag, okay, sorry.
Fine, thank you. Um, so thanks again for putting on this meeting tonight. Uh, I am sorry for the confusion earlier, but, so I'm with, uh, the Champagne Urbana showing up for racial justice and we were working with Pain for Peace. And I believe there was misunderstanding, so Pain for Peace is out protesting right now and so that's why no one, uh, showed up and raised their hand, so.
Totally understandable.
Yes, they're doing other hard work elsewhere. It's great. Uh, so I, uh, was working with showing up for racial justice to try and get voices of youth in Urbana to speak and be heard on this matter because I think it's really important that we hear, uh, youth specifically of color. And so we had put out a call on social media for, uh, input on the concerns that you had put there, uh, concerns about Urbana police and/or ideas about what to do better. So I am just going to read off these anonymous, some were anonymous, some were not anonymous. Uh, they're pretty much emails and/or from Snapchat. And this is just a way for us to try to get the voices of people that weren't as comfortable coming to these things or maybe even had um, internet access to join a Zoom call like this. So bear with me, it's gonna be a little kind of, I'm working with it, so.
You got it.
Essentially, this is, I'm speaking, but these are voices of other people. So I'll start with the emails first. There's just three emails and then there's a couple Snapchat, so it should go quick. All right, first one. Hello, my name is Marshall Schreiner. I'm a resident of Urbana. My main concern with the Urbana police include their overfunding. 20% under budget is in previous fiscal year. Lack of independent oversight and unreasonableness in situations such as with Aaliyah Lewis. The police review board completed reports in less than 10 cases over the last few years. And their inactivity has so distrust between the police administration and the community. I am concerned with the over-deployment of police in situations that do not warrant armed officers. In many situations such as mental health crisis, non-threatening professionals with dedicated training are better equipped for producing safer, more effective outcomes. Thank you for your time and consideration, Marshall Schreiner. Next, I want to provide an idea to improve upon the lack of accountability and transparency in our police department regarding use of force. I want to see a team within the department that reviews the body cam footage of officers' reports for every encounter where an officer uses force. This team should determine if it, if an officer broke any laws and more importantly, should be allowed to comment on whether they believe the officer's actions should be allowed by the department in the future in order to help continually, continually is all caps, help continually reform policing practices on an internal level. Additionally, at least 50% of this team should be made up of people of color to provide a wide range of cultural perspectives. Thank you for your time. And that was by Tim, who is from Champagne. Next. Greetings. I'm a 20-year-old Urbana resident, ready to express my concerns and ideas with regards to policing. Based on personal observations and experience with local social service agencies, I understand predominantly black and brown communities are overpoliced, overpatrolled, and unsurprisingly, under-resourced. With the consistent presence of law enforcement in black spaces and schools, young people and children of color are subject to re-traumatizing reminders of police brutality and the false idea that they are inherently bad, violent, and untrustworthy. Instead of seldom, instead of seldom effective reform, I urge city leadership to seriously consider alternatives to police as a means of ensuring accountability. Solutions that allow individuals to frequent areas do not, they do not live in, employ excessive force, and operate on the basis of punitive measures are not trauma-informed and thus undesirable. Per principles of safety, collaboration, trustworthiness, and employment and empowerment to truly exist in communities, I suggest divestment in the police and thoughtful reconsideration of the proposed fiscal year 2021 Urbana, um, public department budget, Urbana, no, Urbana Police Department budget. Social organizations who are better equipped to engage, assess, and intervene in crisis situations must be prioritized and invested in while police departments reassess and retract their role respectfully, anonymous. And then lastly, we're just a few, um, Snapchat ones. Because youth, they use many different means besides email. All right, um.
I don't think we've ever had a Snapchat played during a city council meeting, so this will be a first for us.
Awesome, great. So under the subject of what are you concerned about in the policing in Urbana? Uh, there's two comments of, one is, "I'm concerned that police in CU use excessive force and that they don't have enough accountability mechanisms." Police sent out seven to eight police cars yesterday during the protest over just one complaint from a woman in her car. And the next one is, "To generalize, aggressive responses to non-threatening situations." That is what they find, uh, concerning. And then an idea is which this one I will end with. I think community should be, I think the community should take funds from the police and put them into social workers, restorative justice programs, and better funding for public school systems. And then my own personal comments were emailed to y'all earlier, so.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
Um, any quick questions or comments for Sarah from council?
Um, I'd like to say something.
Go ahead, Sharice.
Um, because I haven't really made a comment tonight. So this will kind of be a little bit to that. Um, I, um, Sarah, uh, I also worry about overpolicing. I worry about underpolicing as well. I worry about, um, also not the public generally not being educated regarding on, on, you know, and not knowing, not having information, maybe I should say, um, on a, a lot of things regarding the city, the way, the runnings of the city and, and in particularly how I, I, I guess what I really want is for everyone to consider the fact that, uh, Uh. You know, the policing. Countrywide. There there is a culture that has been. Uh. That manifested from. Slavery regarding how. The police. Deal with people of color, specifically, more specifically, black people. Okay, um. But. Um I think what I really want i- is for the public to understand is that nothing's going to happen overnight because it wasn't. It wasn't built overnight, do you understand what I'm saying?
Oh yeah.
Okay, so it's, it really is going to be a. Uh a concerted effort, not just on our part. But on the public's part as well. And when I say that, what I mean is that. It is important. To know. That this is not LA, this is not Atlanta, this is not San Francisco. This is not Jasper, Texas. We have historically in this city had uh African Americans had our issues with champagne police and Urbana police. And there has been. Much progress done. From the years of when I was a little girl. Up to now. That I can, I can think of. Um I lived in Los Angeles for several years. And one time. In front of my apartment building. I saw LAPD officer giving a ticket. To. A young neighbor of mine. And. I asked her, don't you think you should let the girl know that she's getting a ticket? And she said, no, this is none of your business, stay out of it. And I said, okay. And then I walked up to the security box. And I rang her number. To let her know she was getting her car towed and she was getting a ticket, at which time that LAPD officer unsnapped her fire, her uh sidearm. And. I turned to her and I said, really, you're gonna shoot me? Because I'm letting my neighbor know her car is getting towed? And she said, I told you not to. Do this now, I'm a strong believer in. Following directions. I am. And I thought that that was. A little bit too much. But I think the idea of me, I didn't get, I didn't get nasty with her, I didn't call her names. I didn't fight with her. I didn't um, I just looked at her. And I was like. Well. I guess you gotta do what you gotta do. And trust me, I was scared. And I thought she had overstepped. But my thinking that doesn't mean that she wasn't within her. Policy to do it. And unfortunately, I did not get shot because I called my my neighbor to let her know. But um. I've not had the those kinds of experiences, that's the only time that I can think of. I'm sure as this, as this goes on, I could, there might be another time, but. That I could think of, but that's the time that stuck with me. And so I wanted, I guess what I want, or what I, what. Since we're dialoguing. What I really would like is for the public to remember that this is not um. Uh uh institution. That. Is going to change overnight, and we are making strides. To. Uh to change it. And it's because of Black Lives Matter, and it's because of protesting, and it's because it's not like we don't hear you, it's not like we don't. Want to um. To see a system change, because this is a system change that's needed to take. Been need and should have been taken, uh and we've been trying to make it happen for. Over a hundred years. Regarding black people. You know, we've been trying to, we've been marching, we've been, we've been dying. We've been lynched, we've been raped. We've been. Uh. Pulled over and money taken from us for years, for decades, and yes, even for centuries in this country. So. Our patience. Has been one. For our survival. And all I'm asking for the public. To understand is that. Because all of this is going down does not mean that. Law and order as even as we know it now is, and as flawed as it may be. Is not in place. And all I, and for the safety of many public, members of the public. I would ask that when. You come, you have these situations to be as cooperative. And as civil, because that's what's saved us through the years. And when even one, sometimes when we are cooperative and civil, we still die. And you don't need to look any further than George Floyd to see that, you don't need to look any further than. You know. Trayvon Martin or or um uh. Any other young man or woman, Sandra Bland, they, you know, that have. Lost their lives for the struggle, and I don't want to demean or belittle their sacrifice. Because. A a group cannot be patient enough, I want, I want safety above all, do you understand? So um. Thank you for for everything that you said.
Thank you for your thoughts and experience.
Thanks, Charisse, thanks, Sarah, um. I'm gonna take one quick moment here to ask uh. Council, I know we've had a lot of late meetings as of late, and uh we still. See a lot of hands up and folks who want to get in, and I know we wanted to try and. Uh have at least a small discussion ourselves uh at the end of this meeting. Uh so. Uh I'm just trying to get a consensus since we whip our rules and we don't really need to vote on it, uh would folks be alright with uh us taking public input until ten o'clock and then. Having a brief discussion at ten on what we may want to do next? Uh anybody thoughts on that?
I'm fine.
Charisse is fine.
I know, uh people have asked to uh have interaction with us, um we've had long meetings already. Um but I'm willing to go farther, uh if this is gonna be a fruitful interaction with the community, that's fine with me.
Okay, thanks, Dennis.
Allow it to be.
I I do have a question, I haven't been very good about keeping time, um. And so in order to facilitate as many people, do we wanna? Put like a cap of five minutes, what what are people's thoughts on that?
Uh.
I would say yes. We've had some very long-winded conversations, um if we want to share the microphone with the community in a larger way, we have to. We have to ask for some forbearance and make make it, make your comments succinct and to the point.
Yeah, if folks have long statements that they had emailed to us or anything along those lines, I mean, they're gonna get into public input, so just remember that, and. Uh as folks are called, uh if you just wanted direct inaction suggestion to us or or a comment, please, uh please do so, so we can try to get as many of you guys. In as possible in the next forty minutes that we that we have, uh. Uh Eric, Bill, and Bill, uh you guys uh support extending for a little bit past ten?
Yes, yes, let's do public until ten and then discuss among ourselves.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, thanks, everyone. Alright, um I did have another person whose hand was raised, uh who did request prior to the meeting to speak, and that's Amina Payne. Uh can somebody get her? Unallowed to talk. I mean, you should be live.
Thank you, can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Thanks so much, everyone, my name is Amina Payne, and I'm a two thousand and seven Urbana High School graduate. Turned tertiary educator, now I'll keep my comments very succinct, um I won't take up much time, so others can get in as well. Now I work within the vocational and higher education disciplines of business and education, and I'm dialing in from Melbourne, Australia today. I've also uh discussed with you on not um the ninth of June, and I'm looking to harness your support for the removal of police within Urbana schools. Now, on the twenty second of June, I submitted an Illinois Freedom of Information Act request for a copy of the contract between UPD and USD one sixteen. As well as the cost breakdown. I was provided with both in a limited capacity, I've since requested a review by public access counselor. Um but I'm aware that the pre, even pre-COVID, their turnaround times were nearly twelve months, but for the sake of time, I just want to highlight a couple of costs. That myself and the wider community find concerning, I do want to also let you know that I have support. Of uh Champagne Urbana official support. Um of this request from Champagne Urbana candidates from County Board District Eight, which is Emily Rodriguez, she's also the administrator of CU indivis- indivisible. I also have the support of Mary King, who's a candidate for County Board District Ten. As well as Jennifer Straub, um and her official title, she would like to just state as USD uh one sixteen parent. Now, USD one sixteen is not only paying for the annual salaries of the two officers, which is a hundred and thirty one thousand dollars per officer. Put in the benefits, um that's included with the benefits, but is paying annually for uniforms and guns, which was a one-time cost of seven thousand dollars. And a yearly cost of two thousand dollars per officer. That um they also spend one and a half thousand dollars on annual professional develop, professional development per officer. As well as a one-time payment for a vehicle, which was forty thousand dollars, plus annual vehicle maintenance fees per officer of six thousand dollars. Um I have sent through those costs to you as well for you to confirm, but Police Chief uh Bryant Seraphin can probably also confirm this, but again, this was. Given to me um as per the Freedom of Illinois Information Act request. Now, this is not a responsible use of the school funds. And the board committed to spending three, over three hundred thousand dollars per year, plus the one-time startup cost is of over one hundred thousand dollars. Um. For this presence without any evidence of return on value in terms of student engagement or deepened learning, in fact, the school board. Um does not even monitor the impact of SROs on student learning or success. Now, according to the contract that I have, the SRO program is is to be formally evaluated two years after being implemented, two years. Okay, I don't know any, um you know, in my line of work. Two years is a really long time to 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 formally review something. Um but mere presence of police in school serves to reinforce and accelerate the prison, the school-to-prison pipeline, and that's supported by data. So I urge you to support this initiative, just to remove SROs from USD one sixteen. For future budget considerations, now the reality of the budget shortfall also needs to be addressed, and that was stated to me by Board Member Peggy Patton. Now, for many, school is the only place to access mental health counseling and support, so I would like to see um the school board. And you all support that by prioritizing the engagement and health and well-being of students. Eliminating the contract with the police department will allow for the resources to be reallocated to the supports that truly need. Lastly, our learners are watching this moment as well, as you know. Um so what will we show them and teach them, will we teach them to display performative allyship? Or will we take bold steps towards real action and healing in the midst of anguish and uncertainty? The choice, the choice is ours, thank you.
Thanks, uh Amina, uh. I, you, it brought something up, uh and Chief Seraphin, are you uh with us? And able to uh answer a question, I s- I see he's in the. Eric, hey, alright, so it was, I was under the impression we were, the program would be reviewed after one year, are we? Is it two years or is it one year?
So it's one year. Excuse me one second here.
I can confirm with you, I can actually share the contract with you, and I can show you.
It should be, the way I understand it is, and I don't have it in front of me here, uh myself sheet sheet. Does, I believe that it was going to be in 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 a couple of years, and the other thing I um, but but so we can have a chance to collect some data. Obviously, um this just uh kicked off with the two SROs uh after the first of the year. And so at this point, this year has been. Clearly, clearly wonky uh with regards to the pandemic. Um I also want to make a quick correction that the startup costs was was actually funded by the city. Um and then the the salary and those those sorts of um costs were going to be borne by the school district. Um the other thing that I I just want to make a quick mention of as we kind of computed those costs. Is that the, I believe it was a ten-year, um and Elizabeth Hannon, our finance director, would do better at this than I would. I think we use the average of a ten-year officer um as for their salary, um I know that the number has been brought up of one hundred thirty-five. Um and I think the actual salary is closer to the eighty-ish range, um and then there's various other things that. Um are on it, whether that's benefits, pension costs, and those kinds of things, so. Uh just.
Thank you, Bryant, I just want to clarify that the costs that were shared with me were the confirmed costs. Um I also had a look at the budget, and I can confirm that two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars um. Was already paid out, so again, I've have requested with PAC exactly what that was paid out for, I can't, I, you know, I can't say. You would probably, you would be the expert on that, but I just wanted to let you know the numbers that I do um have confirmed in front of me.
Okay, thi- thi- thanks, Amina, uh and Chief, just to go back to that one point, uh the review is after two years then?
Yeah, I. Excuse me, um yes, it's it's a lot, yeah, and I don't, I don't remember if it was two and a half, I I think it's two, remember, we started mid-year.
Yeah, it was mid-year. Okay, do you know the the date on that? When that review will be?
I'm sorry, Jared, would you repeat that, please?
Uh do you know when the date of the review will be or thereabouts?
Um no, I do not off the top of my head, I can probably find that in just a a little bit, but yes.
Yeah, okay. Just to send it to us, so we have it for reference.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh any questions for Amina or the chief on SROs or comments amongst council on SROs? Dennis, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a strong agreement with you generally, Amina, and thank you for contributing your thoughts about whether it's appropriate to have. Police officers in the school, at least as they appear. And are um presented currently, I think it might be reviewed how that works out for us.
Thanks, Dennis, any other quick comments, go ahead, Marys?
I I just wanted to bring up that we did receive an email comment about this from a student. On um the use of SROs, and he had suggested that the students themselves are inter. Are surveyed to figure out what their thoughts were on, I thought it was a, it was an interesting. Suggestion that he had.
Uh that there should be a survey?
That there should be a survey of the students in the school and what their impressions and experiences.
Yeah, I would, I would hope, I believe they would certainly pursue that in a review process, but. Certainly, it should be brought up to the school board if not. In that review process, uh any other quick comments? Go ahead, Bill, Brown?
I'll just mention that we discussed this pretty thoroughly in November, if you want to go back and look at those meetings, they're online. Um but yeah, originally, there wasn't any review, so we actually inserted that one, because it had to be approved both by the school district and then by the city council. So the school district had approved that, we inserted the review and sent it back to them, they had to. Had to approve that, so I I remember adding the review, and I know we had quite a bit of discussion over the timing and and how much time should be allowed to get good statistics and things like that, yeah.
Okay. Alright, thanks, uh Amina, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, I don't, uh oh, I'm sorry, yes, yes, I do, um Mary Alice, I completely agree with you about the students, I have chatted with many students. Um actually, one um Urbana student in particular has written a piece in the Public Eye about this, so I would, you know, that's an opinion piece, I think that it, data is important. Um I'm I'm an early career researcher myself, so I really like data, um so I just encourage that data to be uh. Compiled as soon as possible, I think two years is too long. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, uh just to make everyone aware, I've got uh. Eight hands still up, we have about thirty minutes left, that's about three and a quarter minutes per person, so uh again, just wanna. Uh reiterate to folks, if you can be as succinct and concise as possible, so we can get as many people in and try to have a little bit of conversation. Alright, uh I don't have any others, uh and I apologize if anybody did send an email ahead of time that I'm missing. Uh on my list, uh but so we'll just start going down the list of people we have. Uh I've got Creel Unbeloved. Uh as next, if we want to recognize. Them, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, no, thank you, my email says it all. It dumped me in the middle of all.
It dumped me in the middle of all.
We still, we still hear you.
Oh, my email said it all. You don't need to take time on my personal comment.
Okay, thank you. All right, Allison says, I'm sorry, I don't want to say your last name wrong, but says ours.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, it's it's Kassar.
Kassar, thank you, sorry about that.
No, no problem. I just, I just want to follow on the heels of the last comment. And and add that if we're discussing data driven review of of school resource officers. I would like to point out, as I have in my email, that there is. Been significant study and there's now an increasing volume of study of the role of of. Student resource officers in schools and their efficacy in preventing specifically violent assault. School shootings, which I think is everybody's big concern and the big reason that they. Were so widely rolled out in the wake of of Columbine. And there have, there's, there's information that you can find pretty easy easily online. And and in peer review journals suggesting that there's not a lot of evidence for. Resource officers deterred violent crime and violent attacks within schools. And it was very well publicized after the Parkland school shooting that the research officer not only did nothing, but. Deliberately stayed outside during the shooting. It was determined in the criminal cases brought against him that he likely could have saved most of the students on the third floor of that school if he had acted. And I think eleven counts were brought against him of child endangerment and negligence. And and so, you know, looking at that, at what actually happens when a school resource officer is. Is on scene for a shooting, as as horrible as those things are to think about. You know, we need to look at the data for whether they're even effective or if they're just kind of sitting in schools. Shifting discipline from educators and counselors and principals and parents, which is where. The only people who should be disciplining children to, you know, to the legal system, to police officers, to criminalization. Which which on its own is traumatizing to children, especially to black and brown children, especially to children with disabilities and learning impairments. Who may be over disciplined just because they act differently from other students. And and so it's an racial issue, it is a disability rights issue, it is a mental illness rights issue. To review with the most up to date research, the efficacy of. Of of student, of school resource officers, especially armed school resource officers, these are armed police in our schools with our children. And and to make decisions quickly, because again, there are armed police in our schools with our children based on existing data and review. And and not just to, you know, fall victim to, you know, what could happen, what could happen. And to actually look at what does happen in these scenarios. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. You have responses, quick questions, comments for her? Nope, okay. I did, somebody just emailed me and I think I had their name. Their name is different in here than the email, but I had a Grace Wall.
Extremely powerful, well organized and peaceful event led by some amazing black women. At one point while blocking an intersection, an older white woman hit a young, a young black protester with her car. These officers arrived and suspiciously questioned the protesters while the perpetrator was driving away. The officers finally approached the car and talked with the woman, who was ultimately allowed to leave safely with no consequences. I did not see the officers ever check with the victim to see if she was okay. The victim, a young black woman, apparently had no faith in the police system, as she did not make a statement or complaint, and rightfully so. At the same time, Leah Lewis is facing the threat of time in prison after being assaulted by Urbana police officers. The racism at the core of our system is appalling, and yet here in Urbana too. I ask that the charges be dropped against Leah Lewis with whatever influence you have, and that the Urbana police were to support and not harass its community members. I do not want to see any more of our community members abused, killed, or harassed by those meant to supposedly protect and serve. After the incident with the driver, the officers stayed with the protesters, but their presence did not seem supportive. They brought weapons to a peaceful protest. Many of them were not were not wearing masks in the middle of this pandemic. I felt unsafe by their presence, even with my white privilege. The community is counting on police to protect us. Many of my loved ones work in the food industry where they don't feel safe to enforce the mask policy. When officers do not wear a mask while approaching citizens, they are endangering members of our community. The police have been given too much power without being held to the same law and standards as everyone else. I ask that you significantly reduce the police budget and instead invest it into equitable community development. I ask that you empower a truly independent and representative police review board and require education on social justice. Deescalation, deescalation techniques for all police officers. I do not support the local police cooperation with ICE in our community, and I ask that our police stop cooperating with ICE detainments. And stop harassing our Hispanic community members. Too often, people of color, people with mental disabilities and people who identify as queer are not safe with our police, even here in Urbana. Who protects from the police? Right now, no one, but you could be with your decisions and actions. Healthy, sustainable communities require that all citizens feel safe and feel heard by our governing system. I ask that you seriously listen to the community and seek ways to reform or rebuild a better system. We are counting on you to make decisions on our behalf. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Grace. Go ahead, Mary else.
I just had a quick question for you, Grace. You had mentioned this, where this protest happened, was it, what city was it in?
Um, Lincoln and University, that seems kind of right on the edge to me. I'm not sure which one.
All right, do you know what cops, what what department responded?
I don't.
Okay, because Lincoln and University is, it could be, it could be Urbana, it could be the U of I police, it's, it is, you're right, it's on that border. In terms of the University of Online Urbana, but thank you.
Yes, I don't know if there was any official reporting. Like I said, I don't think the officers ever talked to the victim. I don't know that there was anything on record as the assaultants left the scene.
Okay, thanks for the info. Appreciate it.
Eric? You need to unmute Eric.
Eric, you're muted.
Quickly, if you could.
Yeah, a number of years ago, we passed a policy that nobody in the city government, including the police. Would either inquire about or reveal the immigration status of any, of anybody. Any resident or anybody with whom they might come into contact. You mentioned cooperation with ICE. Our policies preclude cooperation with ICE. They prevent it, they forbid it. But do you know of instances where that's been violated?
I believe so, and I'd be happy to send some more information.
Okay.
Okay.
To the city council email or where?
That's fine.
Yep, that works.
Thanks, Grace. All right, we still got a bunch of hands. I know some people have come up since I said there were eight. There's probably even more now. But we'll keep going down the list. So again, if you, just a quick reminder to folks, if you have a statement that you can send, I would encourage folks to. Make points if you want to have a quick discussion, we'll try to get as many people in as we can. Tracy Chong, you're up next.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Tracy.
Okay, I'll try to speak fast. Hi, I'm Tracy Chong from Urbana. First. Some of the comments and discussion by CPRB members last night did give me hope. That board members are willing to put in the work to move forward, so that's great. However, I hope city council will pay attention to city staff actions and motives in the future. One of the main concerns is the gatekeeping of city staff and UPD, which resulted in complaints by citizens being rejected. Last night, Carol Mitten, after collaborating with Lieutenant Richard Souls, came up with. Flowcharts to categorize complaints into what she calls substantive substantive complaints. Which would go through the CPRB process and another category administrative issues that according to Mitten. May not be a good use of CPRB's time. Some of the complaints that Mitten deemed not a good use of time include police officers' general behavior, police mishandling of calls. Lost property during arrests and traffic violations by police officers. So CPRB members have voiced their willingness to review complaints. So why are Carol Mitten and Lieutenant Souls appointing themselves as gatekeeper? And deciding for the board members what is a good use of time? That should be their decision and only their decision. According to Mitten, just because that she actually said this, just because there's a policy violation by a sworn officer. It may not be a misconduct. From what I've read, section three hundred and twenty one point five in the UPD manual provides a list of misconduct. The first item on the list reads violation of or ordering and instruct or instructing a subordinate to violate any policy. Procedure, rule, order, directive, requirement, or failure to follow instructions contained in department or city manuals. So why is Carol Mitten trying to redefine the meaning of misconduct that is already in the UPD policy? How, why should we this? Is it so that city staff and UPD can reject more police complaints submitted by residents? If residents, if a resident feels strongly enough about a police officer's actions and takes time to file a complaint. It is a complaint. It is not up to Carol Mitten and certainly not up to UPD's Richard Souls. To reject complaints based on a set of categories they have come up with. Let me repeat, every single complaint submitted by a resident is a complaint. All complaints need to be given a number and entered into a system so that it can be tracked. CPRB members or a subcommittee of CPRB need to be able to see every complaint submitted. And make independent decisions on how to handle these complaints. Moving forward, city staff should not be part of this decision process. Also, board members were prevented from voting last night. The reason was because they have not had training. I mean, these guys have been voting for years. Why stop that now in this critical moment? Does this mean that every vote taken in the past years are not valid? Even weirder still, Carol Mitten is suggesting that they practice some of the changes proposed before actually codifying it. How is this even legal? I think based on Scott Das's response last night and Mikhail Lubinski's comments today, CPRB is on the right track. And board members understand the issue, but I want to make it crystal clear to city council. What city staff led by Carol Mitten is trying to do, and I urge you to set some boundaries and provide oversight to what staff is doing. Okay, very briefly. Lastly, I would like some answers to these two issues. First. Why are the publicly available portions of the UPD policies redacted? For example, in section three hundred and eight point two point one regarding when officers can initiate a vehicle pursuit. All five points are redacted. In the following section about speed limits, the whole list of factors that office officers should consider when determining. The reasonableness of the speed of the pursuit are blacked out. You can't see anything. In the next example, in the patrol rifle section. The whole list of seven general guidelines for deploying the patrol rifle are blacked out. I mean, we can't even see the guidelines for police handling these rifles. This, this reduction happens over and over in UPD policies. Why is this information hidden from the public? I really want Chief Seraphin to comment on this tonight. Second question, I brought up FOIA issues at several meetings. Most concerning is the recent move by the city to charge for records. I hope you guys can answer this. Have any of you looked into why requesters working on police oversight are being charged hundreds of dollars for body camera footage? And citizen review process documents. Thank you.
Thanks, Tracy. Is there any quick comments from council for Tracy? Follow up, Dennis, go ahead.
Yeah, I've asked why we're we're charging, maybe there's a staff fee for the processing, but why is it so much? I've asked about that. I haven't had a response yet.
Thank you.
Other quick questions from council? Chief, if you're. Go ahead, Sharice, sorry.
I'm sorry, no, I guess you can't see because I'm I'm busy, kind of, you know, I told you I would.
Yes, yes, yes.
Other stuff. I'm gonna see if I can find it. Tracy, there was something that I came across, that's downloads. And there, there is a charge regarding like how many megabytes. Something is. And. And the time, and the time charged for the staff to find it.
Why is this happening right now?
I think it has to do with with so many. FOIA requests, I think there, there is. And I, I really, to tell you the truth, I'm, it's not my, this isn't my bailiwick. It was just something I was looking up last night because you've you've asked this before. And so I was, I did, I did take the time to look it up last night. And it, and for some reason, it's, I can't find, I can't find it in my downloads now. Oh, wait, 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 here we go. FOIA fees regarding the FOIA fees. There, there are so many, more than eighty megabytes, but not more than a hundred sixty megabytes of data is forty dollars, more than a hundred and sixty megabytes. Of data, a hundred dollars. For the most part, I think, I think it also has to do with voluminous and recurrent. Requests produced in electronic form or PDF format. There are, so if you're asking for data like film or something, I imagine that that is. Quite more than a hundred and sixty megabytes of data. So. That's the, the. Right now, that's the best I can answer your question.
Okay, maybe we can follow it up. I'd like to give a chance to other people to talk. But maybe during the discussion section, Chief Seraphin can comment on the UPD policies, but I would really like to give other people a chance to talk.
Yeah, that's good.
Thanks, 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 Tracy. All right, just a reminder, folks, we've got about twelve minutes left of input, so if you. Can keep succinct, and Tracy, if you're still listening, I just wanted to make a quick suggestion to you. You've offered a lot of really great insight every time you've made comments. But we haven't gotten them by email, so sometimes it's hard to follow back up on those. If you could go back through some of your statements you've made and email them to council. Would be most beneficial, at least on land. All right, Christopher, you're up next. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Christopher Hanson. I've worked in Urbana for eighteen years. I'm going to make a couple of quick statements about comments that were made earlier by council members. And I'm going to talk about a fairly new issue that I think is important. One thing I wanted to point out is that only some, some members of the public called for a third party review of the Lewis arrest. And many members of the public are not convinced that it will be useful or meaningful. Furthermore, there are many people who think that this thirty part, third party review is just an expensive PR move by the mayor. I also wanted to make clear to William Colbrook about a comment he made earlier. It has not been demonstrated that the city of Urbana and the police department do not have corruption. That is not a fact in evidence, and there is no evidence which which indicates that our police department has any unique mechanisms. That would prevent a George Floyd tragedy in Urbana, and we have had similar tragedies in our area not too long ago. So on to my my new point, and actually this has to do with what Tracy Chong spoke about, and also Carol Spindell also spoke earlier about body cameras and dash. Dash camera footage from the police. So, so the issue is Freedom of Information Act requests from residents asking for that video or police documents. And just recently, Mayor Marlin assigned a new FOIA officer to the city of Urbana, Kurt Orman. And I don't know what additional new instructions came with that appointment, but it seems like everything has just changed for the worst. Urbana, just in the past few weeks, has started assessing huge fees upon residents who request police records. Those fees are often in a range of two hundred dollars and sometimes seven or eight hundred dollars, just for a set of of video reports from one police incident. And I know this has happened to me and it's happening to multiple other people right now. I I've submitted FOIA requests to the Champagne Police Department, to the U of I Police Department and to the county as well, over a period of the last five years at least. And I've never seen anything like this, never. And I want to make this very, very clear for Sharice Hershey and others, the city of Urbana has never assessed these fees before. This is a brand new policy. For shutting out and crushing citizens who are attempting to get police records, and it just started happening in the last few weeks. And also, the city of Urbana is is threatening to assess these fees, again, up to eight hundred dollars or so. They're threatening to assess these fees on residents without their consent. And the effect is that a simple email to the city asking for rescue records could result in the city placing a debt on that person. And the effect is that a simple email to the city asking for rescue records could result in the city placing a debt on that person. Essentially fining someone for asking for police records. Um, I also want to make clear again, as already been pointed out, the public cannot see a full copy of the Urbana Police Department policies. And it's such a joke that we're, we're sitting here talking about, you know, reviewing the policies and making sure they're up to date, when we can't even fully review them. Um, and I really like to know what council thinks about, thinks about that. Um, and, and just regarding these, this access to records, as someone who's been working on this, these issues for years, um. From my position, it seems very clear to me at this moment that Urbana is actually moving backwards in regards to police oversight. Things have just gotten much worse. Uh, and I've been trying to get a response from the council for why this is happening, but so far no one has responded. And we've heard just a few words from you tonight, but that's not good enough. I want to know why the city is just now, in the last few weeks, for the first time ever. Hitting residents with massive FOIA fees for police records, and I want to know what the council thinks about that. And um, I, I know this is the first dedicated meeting to the issue of, you know, local police issues, um. But just as a reminder, people have been going on, going at this for over two months. Um, and some of us have been going at it for years, and there are some local people who have been trying for police reform for decades. Uh, and no one is asking for overnight change. Uh, that was such a silly thing for Sharice Hershey to claim, but we've been going at this for months now. Uh, and I think we are all very ready to hear some city council members start saying something more substantive. And more specific than the broad following language that we've been hearing so far. So uh, that's the end of my statement, and if, if you have any questions about uh the issue of FOIA requests, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Thanks, Christopher. Um, any very quick comments? We only.
Diane has a comment.
Go ahead, Diane.
Just a quick response. Number one, the council will be getting a memo from City Legal on um. Actually quite detailed memo on FOIA, uh, probably tomorrow. Number two, the vast, vast majority of people. Um, filing FOIA requests do not get charged or they get charged the per page fee, which is allowed by law. People who are getting charged are ones who are classified as recurrent requesters, or these are people who have. Filed many, many, many FOIAs to the, where they reach the level defined by the state as a recurrent requester, which gives the city extra time to respond. And it also reflects the enormous amount of staff time required to process these FOIA requests. Um, the FOIA officer is following state law on this as well, so if. If city council wants to examine the policy and change it, that's certainly open, but um, I want to emphasize that. The, you know, two or three people, you know, the vast majority of people can, can file FOIAs with no um. No fees or very low fees.
Thank you, Mayor.
State law provides for charges.
Thank, and we look forward to seeing uh uh the memo, all, all that as well.
Can I respond to that?
Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, so the statement that that's, the, the charges are only being applied to recurrent requesters is wrong. Uh, I'm aware of one person who uh has only made a handful of requests and just got hit with a seven hundred dollar fee for dashcam footage. Um, al- also, there's nothing in the FOIA law that indicates that a recurrent, recurrent requester should be charged, and someone who isn't a recurrent Requester. Shouldn't be charged. Um, and also, as I mentioned, this is a new thing that is happening in Urbana. It just got decided recently and, and I. I look forward to receiving a copy of that memo myself. Um, but someone who might be a recurrent Requester. That's not someone to punish or, or to turn away. Those people might be your citizen watchdogs. Um, you might want them to have information, you know, most important of all, because those are the people who are keeping a close eye. On what the city is doing and what the police department is doing. I'll leave it there. Thank you.
So Jared, I think we have time for one more question. We keep it quick. One more, not, sorry, not question, one more public comment.
Okay, um, I, I'm good, I've got three people on the list, uh, Charlotte, G, Donald Owen, Daniel. Jared, who are ahead of Giovanna Di Benedetto, who represents a troubled neighborhood. On Silverwater area. I'm gonna call on each of you because you guys were here in order. Uh, and just ask if, uh, at all possible, keep your comments as brief as possible. I'd really like to be able to get Giovanna to speak, but you of course have. Have your selection. So Charlotte, you're next, uh, and you should be able to unmute, so go ahead.
Uh, hello, hi, hi, it's um. Hi, my name's Charlotte G. Um, I live in Urbana. And uh, I'll keep this brief. Uh, last, I believe it was last night, the Champagne Unit Four School Board passed a unanimous resolution to define. Racism as a public health crisis in units for schools. As part of their discussion. Um, there is significant public input and part of that was a. Universe, almost universal unanimous support from public input. To asking for the removal of SROs. Um, uh, for the audience, SROs are armed police officers within schools. Uh, this discussion has been had before at length. Um, within Urbana, however, um, again, given the nature of police violence, given the nature of institutional racism within. The uh city hierarchy. There should be a push, particularly by the city council to remove the SROs. Um, Champagne is looking into doing it. Uh, it is imperative that Urbana does the same thing and removes these officers because. It's extremely detrimental. Um, I believe there was a two percent reduction in the budget. Um, that it can be something like a hundred thousand dollars or something. These officers cost Urbana schools three hundred thousand dollars. Were paid, so that's already greater than the reduction in the police budget. The three hundred dollars, hundred thousand dollars could go towards uh. Yeah, well, that was weird. Uh, to go towards. Actual services like mental health services and greater classroom support uh for teachers. Uh, that's my comment. Yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Charlotte. All right, uh, Donald, uh, you should be able to speak. Go ahead.
Thank you, I will um. Not actually make my comment, instead I'll ask three very simple questions. Uh, Dennis Roberts, could you tell me who's responsible for creating the city council agenda on a regular basis? Who creates the agenda?
Staff does.
Uh, thank you, that's good, that's good. Um, I, I want to keep this short because. Like the rest of you, Giovanna is the person we need to be hearing from, someone from Silverwood, the corner of Silver and Water. She's a strong voice for the community. Jared, you're up. Um, who made the decision to move forward with the April twenty-seventh city council meeting, specifically the agenda item related to. Putting Aaliyah Lewis's uh body cam footage and other evidence that will be used in a case against her. On a public display at the city council meeting.
Uh, I don't believe it was a council decision, but it was a response to all the calls from the public for us to discuss it.
Yeah, I, I'm asking specifically who made the decision. Do you know?
It would, it would have come from the mayor and staff.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Bill Brown, you're up. This is my last question. Bill, I've asked you this question several times. You have not given me an answer. If Aaliyah Lewis was a twenty-one-year-old white University of Illinois student who came from the suburbs with. Parents who had the money to afford an attorney, maybe a Steve Beckett, a Tom Bruno, uh, Baku Patel. Would that city council meeting have happened the way it did?
Probably not.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Uh, Daniel, uh, if uh, uh, at all possible, if you could uh yield the last minute or two to Giovanna, we'd love to hear from her, but of course you're uh. Welcome to speak.
Hello, my name is Daniel Waxmacher. I absolutely yield my time alongside a request that the council holds such a forum again. As there's obviously much interest in further discussion. I also want to acknowledge in previous council meetings, I requested an opportunity for dialogue. As opposed to merely statements, and I want to thank you for taking that feedback and acting on it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel, and I know we're running up on ten, Mary Alice, but uh, we'll just get this last one in and then we'll go to council discussion.
It sounds good, thanks.
Uh, Giovanna, you should be able to unmute yourself. Go ahead.
Okay, am I good?
You're good.
Okay, um, first of all, I want to say thank you um to the city council for inviting me to um, to be a part of this tonight. Um, due to my own scheduling things and running food drive, you know, everything's been going on. Um, I've not had the time to devote to these issues that um, I would normally like to be able to devote. Um, but there are some concerns. Um, I, I am sure everyone is aware that um. Crime in Silverwood particularly, um, we are having some issues. Um, the violence is going up, which although that comes in waves, and we know that. I can say that many of us are very concerned about that. Those are issues that I will bring up in an email and how to address those. We know. Where the problems are, we know what's causing it. In regards though, um, to the um. Police department and to us working together with you city leaders on um, on changing things. Um, reminded of a quote, and I think you'll see it on the webpage a lot that I use. And it's something that I've been reiterating to these residents that, and I think I actually heard this at a, a. A coalition meeting where someone said, because you are poverty, because you come from poverty, doesn't mean you are poverty. And I think that the Silverwood residents that are of the lower income, um, because we are very diverse, you know, we all know that. We are racially diverse in this neighborhood, we are economically diverse, which makes it very unique. But the issues hitting those that are poverty-stricken are. They, they're so glaring right now, and they are so difficult, and um, I. So many things that I heard tonight concern me and so many things we are getting solutions for. So let me share a positive that I saw this week, um, without jeopardizing the person's privacy. There was a domestic violence situation where a um, an African-American family. And the mother showed up, she should not have been here. She became violent. The officer that responded when he was called after the parent had left and the child was safe and the custodial parent was safe. Um, it was a white officer, and they were so great with this family. And that's typically not what we're hearing these days. So something is starting to change over here. Something is working. Um, because that family felt safe. They felt safe with that officer. They felt safe pressing charges. Um, and going forward, hopefully, you know, in what is normally, it's a domestic violence situation. And not only are we dealing with a racial issue here, we're dealing with um, a male that, you know, a male and his son. That were on the victim's side. Um, and so, as someone who saw what happened, I was very encouraged by that. However, it was interesting because we have some education to do. When the officer left, he didn't do the usual shake hands, right? And the parent mentioned that to me, and we're like, um, it's COVID dude, we can't do that. And he's like, oh yeah. And it made me realize that we need to put something together, you guys, where we educate these residents who normally maybe don't watch TV, don't have access to internet. Um, where we get something out to them somehow with one of the other projects we're doing, so that they know what to expect. What the officers can and can't do during this time of COVID. Um, and so that's, that's the big positive that I saw this week. That was, I think people really need to be aware of. Um, what I see that needs to be changed right now and where um, where I need your help, where we need your help. Um, I think our group now has finally adopted the names of our hearts, whether it's, no matter what project we do. Um, is that we need leaders that show that they care. After four years here, I still repeatedly hear they don't care. We don't see them here. Diane, you're out. You know, I know when we do the big events, Diane's out, and I know Carol's been out, and we have people to come out. But the reality is post-COVID, and, and aside from those fun things, they are not seeing anybody. And I'll be honest, I'm leaving here in two weeks. I'm going over to Aspen. My work will continue here, but we're losing my. We're losing the man on the ground, kind of thing. Um, so we have to figure that out. Right now, the big need is we're doing these food deliveries. Maybe we can work something out where city leaders are leading bikes. Or where we do this safely with police officers. So that, um, because they can't be kind of out and about, like with that grant that was being provided. Um, where there's something, because we have to create a dialogue. Um, people are afraid of you guys, they're afraid of the police, they're afraid to file complaints against landlords still. Um, and those are huge issues that can't be solved overnight. They can't be solved tonight. But I want to make you guys aware that these are still the glaring problems. Now, the flip side is, after four years, we've been to, you know, we've been discussing this lately in our groups. We have seen a change. Four years ago, when we started the work here, Jared, I think you'll remember. We would go door knocking and canvassing, nobody would open their door to us, right? It was like, who are you and what are you doing? I can send strangers. I sent teens out from a sheltered kind of campus church. It was mine. But still, they like never go into neighborhoods like this. I was stuck, you know, at Beckett Quest, sending them out. I could send them out without being afraid for them, even though, I'll be honest, we've had some situations lately where I'm. I'm nervous for me and my girls, and so are some of the residents. But I could overall, we can do that now. We couldn't do that four years ago. But we've got to get better, and I would love to, I, I will outline this stuff in an email the next few days. But I would love a chance to be able to sit down now that I'm able to focus, um. And devote the attention, but please know that the, the Silverwood residents, they care about their neighborhood. They care about each other. And um, they, they want to help each other. But it's hard to do that when, and I'm gonna be point blank, when we have a whole massive new group of drug dealers. Living within two buildings. And people are, people are scared again. And then you have the current environment where there's racial problems going on. And how do you manage this? Because I don't have the answers, and I've been asking the answers. Or I've been asking the questions. But we have to make this safe again, because if it's not safe for the lower income, it's not going to be safe for the better part of the neighborhood. So, um, thank you again, and I will definitely, hopefully, we'll be in touch.
Thank you, Giovanna. We appreciate it very much and look forward to hearing from you. Eric, did you have a quick, quick question?
Very, very quick. Um, I think that uh. Uh, what I have found is fist bump is a safe and acceptable alternative to shaking hands.
Well, if we can let our officers know that, um, like I said, he, the, the gentleman was, he is a friend of mine. He was very cool about it when I reminded him. But at the same time, he's like, okay, that, you know, it, it's tough for everybody right now, but I think in a neighborhood that depends so much. On those interactions, these people. It was a little bit of a big deal at first. It may seem minor to you or me, but to him it wasn't. I mean, he had just been victimized. You know, his home, his windows were broken.
Yeah.
You know, so, um, but I will let people know, attempt fist bump with the police and let them know when they come over here, so.
Thank, thank you, Giovanna. Okay, um. Brian, Brian Dunn, Lisa Tomlinson, and Austin Hoffman, I deeply apologize. If we're gonna uh shift away from public input, I hope this is not. Going to be the last of these kinds of meetings, uh, that we can probably look forward to many more. Um, so I apologize that we didn't get to you guys tonight. If you had comments prepared, please uh email them to us and they will get in with uh the record. And we're gonna shift to a quick conversation with council. Uh, just uh, to illuminate that conversation, I know we're still in a pretty informal environment, uh, just so everybody was aware. We're looking for us, uh, the reason why, uh, Mary Alice and I put it on there was just to try and. Give us uh the opportunity to uh give some direction to staff or ourselves about what we want to. Do next, whether that's calling another meeting, whether that's considering uh another board. Or if we want to uh quickly discuss any of the issues that were brought up uh tonight, this is the opportunity to do that. Uh, looks like we probably got twenty more minutes till uh ten thirty, so I will open. Uh, first for uh any discussion items on anything that was brought up that we want to quickly discuss, and then we'll move to what can we do next. Uh, any ideas on some, anything people want to bring up? I have one, one topic that I would like to bring up if no one else wants to go first. Cannot see any hands raised, uh, and. Chief, uh, Serf, are you still with us? Did not go over panelists, look. All right, you are still with us. Okay, so, uh, this uh was a, a, an issue that has been brought up uh numerous times. And uh, I think is worthwhile, and you have, and I, I think have discussed this in some brief. Uh, length before, but about the redacted policies and about uh not uh having access to those. Uh, three, three quick questions. One of which I don't know the answer to, but we'll, we'll ask it so everybody can hear. Uh, why are, why are they rejected? Uh, second question, uh, does council have access to redacted policies? And third, does the C P R B have access to, not the redacted, but the full policies, I guess I should say. Why are they redacted? Does council have acted, access to unredacted? Does C P R B have access to unredacted? Why are they redacted? Does council have acted access to unredacted? Does CPRB have access to unredacted?
So, uh, with regards to why they are redacted, there are several hundred pages of policies. Um, I don't remember exactly when it was. It probably, uh, it, it's been a few years ago when we wanted to put them all on, online. Um, before we'd get FOIA's for individual ones and we decided this is horribly inefficient, let's put them all on, online. And that was a few years ago. Um, FOIA does allow for exemptions, um, and there are considerations uh, with regards to tactical or police, um, techniques, uh, that we wouldn't necessarily want everyone to know as it might compromise an operation. So, uh, that was why, um, it was divvied up among staff and, and people had tried to, uh, so of the several hundred pages, I want to say there's 25 or 26 exemptions in, in the documents. Um, with regards to the, uh, CPRB or council having full access, um, to those particular things. Uh, I've never been asked that question and I don't know that I have a solid answer for you right now. That's 100% honest there. So, um, I tend to think yes, unless somebody illegal tells me otherwise. So that's, I guess, my, my answer to those three, um,
points. Uh, any follow-up from fellow council members on, uh, reduction topic? Bill Brown and then Dennis.
Uh, well, not so much on redaction, but on the use of force policy. Um, I know that it's, it's policy for Urbana to follow the, um, de-escalation continuum that you showed us. Um, but there's nothing, there's the, the word de-escalation isn't in the, the use of force policy. Would you be willing to, uh, put in a strong de-escalation clause in the use of force policy?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, when we had this most recent event and we, we looked at that, we had already, um, I have, uh, a couple of months ago, uh, Deputy Chief Searls had said, you know, some of the policies have been launched over the course of, uh, back in 15, I think it was all, everything was touched. And some of them are still from 2015. Um, and so, uh, we'd already started some of this, some reviewing some of these and all the lieutenants get certain ones. Um, but yes, one of the things that we've looked at was exactly what you're, uh, discussing, Bill. So yes, as a matter of fact, we, we, we believe that will be uh, part of the, uh, the review process of the Leah Lewis incident. And so we're hoping to get some feedback and make it much more robust, including the de-escalation.
Okay. Yeah. I think it'd be good, uh, if people have good examples from other policies, um, of how de-escalation can be incorporated in the use of force and, and make it, um, make it, uh, sorry, I'm getting it's late. Make it transparent and, um, enforceable basically so that, you know, um, we can follow up and make sure, make it clear, uh, where the steps are.
I understand.
Dennis, go ahead.
Sure. I'd like to, uh, encourage the, uh, chief to make, uh, the police policy available to certainly the CPRB and to council members. Um, I don't want to microanalyze everything that happens, but there are issues that would be wise for us to be more aware of about how the procedures evolve and what the chain of command becomes when certain issues are happening. So, uh, did you say that they were, they were actually online? Are they accessible online?
There.
Yes. Policies. So they're redacted online if one would take the time to go find it. Is that correct?
No, the, so what was online is, is the hundred pages or whatever it ends up being with redactions. So, um,
I see.
That's what's on, that's what's online.
I see.
Okay. Do you have another comment, Dennis?
Well, yeah, the other thing I want to, want to say is that I would encourage us to reexamine the need for SROs in the public schools. I think, you know, if there needs to be security, perhaps the school district should be hiring a security guard and not employing the police department. I think we ought to have a conversation about that.
Thanks, Dennis. Uh, any other quick comments or on existing issues from council members? Good. I had one, one more, Dennis, and I'll go right back to you. Uh, chief, we, we've often, uh, circled around this, but, uh, can you explain a little bit about how, uh, policy is set within the UPD if it's, uh, a combination of, uh, what the mayor wants and what's common practice and all of that, just briefly? Uh, how is policy set and, uh, does council have a role in that?
So the, the policies are, um, set and, and as a matter of fact, I, I suppose one might say they were inherited over, over time. Um, and the, the, the setting of those changes with best practices, we put, we take input from different resources. Uh, the International Association of Chiefs of Police. Um, I think most of the, the council is aware of, uh, the Lexipol product um, that, that we currently use. And then we do take input from councils. As a matter of fact, the, the TASER policy, when that was implemented several years ago, was a quite a, an effort, um, from, uh, multiple, uh, pieces of input. Um, and from different places. So it, there is, there's room, I guess, for everyone to, to be at the table. We will clearly try to make sure though, that we are, um, again, defaulting to some of those best practices and some of the trainings that, that come from some of those, the organizations that are, are in this kind of work, but there's clearly room for more than one voice there.
Thank, thank you, chief. Uh, Dennis, uh, one more and then Eric, and then let's, uh, discuss next steps.
Sure. Um, though we've had, uh, as it was Sarah Nixon who had commented about, about her concern. I think she was the, the, the person who, who asked us to please look into the, um, independent reviews of the independent reviewer. Um, Hildert Heinz, where we, we haven't, uh, written a con, we haven't signed a contract with that individual yet, or have we? Have we already signed that? Have we, have we agreed that that's going to be the appropriate agency to, uh, lead the independent review? Uh, it does bring a concern, I think, forward that, um, you know, if we have this independent review, is this person, who, have they, had, do they have any kind of record or recommendation from the N double C, N double A C P or the ACLU or any other agency that would be of interest to us to know about?
I, I, I see the mayor has jumped on, um, Mayor, did you want to?
Let's know.
Um, we, we had several interviews with this firm and, um, I was impressed with this, the breadth of their experience and their ability to do the job. And we emphasized, number one, it was important to be able to evaluate our internal policies and the actions of the officers related to those policies, which is the basis of the review. But another very important component was their ability to conduct interviews with community stakeholders, which means city council members and with representatives from the community groups that we've heard from, you know, over the past few weeks. And to get a very broad representation from the community. And to me, that was, um, just as important as, you know, evaluating the, the, the officer's activities as well. And then third, we wanted them to do the, um, try to determine if the allegation related to an officer or officer's contact with the person who made the video, um, to get to the bottom of that. So we had a lot of conversations, um, talking about the scope of the project and the ability to do that. And we have a very firm commitment for that, and that is written into the project. So I'm, I am, um, confident that they're going to do the job and I'm confident that they are going to talk to enough people and get enough feedback that we're going to get a very, um, I think a very robust picture of what, of what's going on here.
Then I think, well, that's the crucial part is then to, uh, get assessment from different sections of the community to get the full range of the responses to what is seen on the videos and what happened.
And then they will also, um, make a presentation to council and answer your questions. So they'll be accountable to city council. And then they also have the ability to come back after, and they'll make recommendations and then they have the ability and will come back. I believe it was six months afterwards to see, um, how we're doing in terms of implementing the recommendations. So was that, there was that follow-up too.
Okay. I appreciate the, your comments, Mayor, because I mean, you know, this is a concern that we have a full investigation that's truly unbiased and not.
Well, I, I want to stress, this is a review. There's a difference between an investigation and a review, but this is an independent review of this incident.
Okay. Eric and then Mary Als.
So it won't be up to me to follow up, but just to remind a little bit about the context of the SROs. Because there was tremendous concern within the Urbana School District about violence in the schools. And there was especially one incident that got completely out of control and put a teacher who tried to intervene in the hospital. So I would, it'll be, it'll be you guys to deal with, but I would be pretty deferential to what the school board and the school administration, uh, want. I mean, we've, we've heard, um, studies, national studies cited here, but every school district is different. And the Urbana School District really was having some major problems that prompted them to make this request.
Thanks, Eric. Mary Als.
Yeah, I've been, I've been quiet because, uh, there's been a lot of interesting input, um, a lot of interesting ideas. And the, the question you posed is where do we go from here? Um, and so for me, I feel like I need to reflect a little bit on, on some of the questions that, that the community is asking and those suggestions that they're giving. So I suppose the next steps that I would suggest is that sometime in July that we put as a discussion item on one of our agendas, the, the committee agenda, for example, that we continue this conversation. Um, but I'm open to other people's ideas. I'm just, I'm just kind of thinking, what is the best way forward in seven minutes?
Anyone else want to propose a next step? Uh, I've got an idea too. If nobody wants to raise a hands. Go ahead, Eric.
I'll just come back to the theme I started with. If the things that, that you all do are in the direction of replacing retributive justice with restorative justice, I think you will be going in the right direction. That's a bit of a radical idea in the United States. Uh, elsewhere, it's not so radical. And I think that there isn't, there isn't actually another way that we're going to get out of the situation we're in. And now, I mean, by this, I mean, the whole society. The other thing I would say is that we can do, we can create a perfect police department. But if that perfect police department feeds into a flawed state's attorney's office, a flawed detention system, a flawed sheriff's office, a flawed court system, then most of the problems remain. And I, because of Jim Simons', uh, constraints, I'm not going to make specific comments on the state's attorney and on the, and on the judge. I'll make a factual comment. This judge was the prosecuting attorney who would not prosecute the white key young man who assaulted my son. And now he's a judge, but I'm glad he's going to retire. And, um, so I think somehow whatever we do with police, we also have to, somehow the community has to reach out to these other aspects of the problem.
Thanks, Eric. Uh, Bill Colbrook.
Muted, Bill.
Yeah, I was getting there. I had to get my mouse and then click. So, um, yeah, I guess, uh, next steps. Um, I guess I want us as a council to keep an open mind. Um, I think that we need to weigh all voices and, um, and kind of understand where people are coming from. Um, I think there's been a lot of, uh, very loud voices from one side. I think there's a lot of other voices that, um, for whatever reason, aren't being as vocal. Uh, those voices are the ones who, who wholeheartedly, um, get great service out of Urbana PD, who wholeheartedly, uh, appreciate, uh, what they do and, 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 uh, and how they do it. Once again, going back to my original comments, there's always room for improvement and, and I'm, I'm looking for that improvement. But just tonight, you know, there was innuendo that there was, you know, entire city on the East Coast that just disbanded their, their police department. Well, that wasn't really the case. There, there was another side to it that wasn't really originally explained in the presentation. Um, there was mention of the Parkland, Florida, um, school resource officer. You know, there's, there was a, a case being made that, that we should get rid of, uh, SROs because there's officers who don't respond. Well, I can guarantee you, uh, no good cop likes a bad cop. And, and that young lady was, uh, saying that, uh, her, her, um, comments were data-driven. Well, the data is that cop was charged for failing to do his job. You know, that's the data. Um, you know, the entire law enforcement community in the nation looked down on that guy because he failed to act. And there was kids that died because he failed to go into the building. I don't know one cop, not one, who would do exactly what he did. Everybody that I've ever talked to in 35 years in this business would go in that, in that building to save those kids. Further, the militration of police. We hear that a lot. And this is where I get emotional. If I haven't been already, I've got family sitting right next to me in this room. What is militration of police? Is it the ballistic vest that we wear? Is it the, uh, sidearm that we have to carry? Is it the patrol rifle that we have to be issued? When I go to work, I expect to come home. She expects me to come home. Every police officer that goes to work wants to come home safely. And the only reason that police departments have the equipment that they have is so they can safely resolve an incident for not only the police officer, but for more importantly, the victims and the suspects. And we can talk equipment by equipment by equipment. Whether it's an armored vehicle, whether it's the ballistic vest, whether it's a patrol rifle, there's lots of equipment that people want to group as the militarization of the police. So we just need to keep that in mind. Also, there was a mention of that Urbana police have openly worked with ICE. Once again, loaded innuendo. There's a law, it's called the Illinois Trust Act. It was enacted in 2017. All Illinois police departments are abided by, uh, to have to abide by that. And basically it says, we as police officers in the state of Illinois, uh, cannot participate with ICE if the only action that ICE has is an immigration status. Okay. Now if ICE comes to us as a, as a police force and they're trying to enforce a criminal warrant, they're acting as police, then police officers are, are not only allowed, they're, they're almost mandated to help because they're other police, right? But, um, there's, there's no police department in, in the state of Illinois that should be just simply helping ICE on immigration status. That just doesn't happen. And, and the person who brought that.
I'll stop you for one second. I'm so sorry, but it is 10:29 and I have no idea if the rule of 10:30 applies.
It does apply.
Okay. So can I just make a motion for 10 more minutes?
Uh, I'll second it.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry. I just wanted to make sure we weren't illegal.
All right.
Uh, we have to do a voice call, voice vote.
Oh, I don't know if, uh, anyone from the clerk's offices is.
About a whole, whatever, the last part of what Bill said because my computer froze.
Okay. Well, I, I don't know that I could replicate it. It was a one and done. Sorry.
So we, we have to have a roll call for every vote, uh, and we don't have anyone from the clerk's office here.
So we will have to.
Get back their own votes.
I'm, I'm happy to call roll for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, council, I, I'll probably do it out of order, but they'll sort it out. Uh, ca- council member Jacobson.
Yeah. Do you want to extend the meeting?
I'm sorry. We want a yes vote. Yeah. Uh, ca- council member Brown.
Yes.
Council member Roberts.
Yes.
Council member Colbrook.
Yes.
Council member Wu.
Yes.
Uh, council member Hersi.
What am I voting on?
Uh, to extend the meeting by 10 minutes.
10 minutes.
Yes.
And council member Neller.
Yes.
All right. You have 10 minutes.
All right. Thank you. And actually that was my four. All right, thank you. And actually, that was my four points. Um, so, uh, I know that people are going to talk too, but, but all, all I'm asking is, let's, let's be reasonable. Let's, let's listen to everybody. Let's weigh what they have to say. But, but there's, there's, um, there's a lot to be said for, um, for why the police do what they do and how they do it. And, and all I would ask is, is that we, uh, gather all the data and make informed decisions on what we do, uh, going forward. So, thank you.
Thanks, Bill Colbrook. Um, so, in the, in the nine minutes we have now, in the rest of the meeting, uh, we're probably not going to make any substantial next steps, but, uh, and we did add, uh, the end of our body camera or beginning of our body camera discussion to, uh, the, as a discussion item on the next committee, the whole meeting, but I would certainly support Mary Alice's move to discuss our next steps at that meeting since, uh, we probably won't get super far in trying to do that tonight. I had some suggestions that I wanted to make about what we would consider forming a special committee or, uh, something along those lines, but, uh, how do others feel about adding a discussion item for next steps onto the next committee, the whole meeting agenda? Sharice, raise your hand.
I just wanted to say something before you made that, that, um, remark. I wanted to come after Bill, actually. Um, and, and Carol could probably answer these questions for me. Um, because I didn't, I did look at, uh, watch some of the CPRB meeting last night, but I didn't get to see all of it, so what I want to know, I know you guys were talking about training and stuff. Um, are, are they going to be trained along with us with the ten principles, uh, the NAACP ten principles?
I think that, um, there's a, a, a list that's being developed with, um, uh, for the people that will attend the training, and I think there's a limit of fifty, so I don't know if they, they will all be able to be included. But I think it would be nice if some of them were able to, um, to be included in those discussion groups.
And is there any planning at all for them to, um, for any of them to attend the citizens' police training?
I, that's certainly something we want to, um, make available to them. I don't know, um, what their ti- what their time commitments are outside of the CPRB and, and they're in the process of changing their meeting schedule from quarterly to monthly, and then the chair wants to have meetings every two weeks for the, uh, in the near future. So, um, that's something we can certainly make available to them. I just don't know if, uh, who, who will have the time to do it.
Okay.
All right, uh, thanks, thanks, Sharice. Uh, any thoughts on adding a discussion item to next committee, the whole meeting?
I think it'd be a wise idea.
Okay.
I guess since I'm chairing it, and, uh, it could be put on there.
Okay, thanks, Sharice. Uh, Bill, Bill Brown, Bill Colbrook, are you guys, uh, okay with adding that? Okay, all right, great. So, we'll, we'll at the, at the very least put, uh, uh, discussion of council, next steps onto the next committee, the whole agenda. Uh, Eric, you were raising your hand. Did you have a, a final thoughts?
Um,
or question?
Very small thought with respect to the, uh, citizens' police, uh, training. I think the part, the, the segment on use of force is just really, really, would be really worthwhile for CPRB. And I think that the, um, understanding, I mean, that's what they do at the PTI is kind of the gold standard on that. And I think that, uh, for the CPRB to understand that from that perspective would really enhance their ability to, to do what they need to do.
Thanks, Eric. Uh, any other parting thoughts from, uh, council members?
You did a good job chairing, Jared. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, uh, I'll just end then, uh, on saying that I really hope that we do this again. Uh, I think this is, uh, productive. It's amazing how quickly three and a half hours can go by, but, uh, I really appreciate everybody uh, showing up tonight and participating in this, uh, including, uh, chief and mayor and Carol, uh, Bitten. Thank you guys for being here to help answer questions and help us work through some of these things. It's a long road ahead. There's a lot of stuff to consider and, uh, glad you guys are, uh, we're all here. Sharice, I'm glad you could make it. Uh, sorry, you didn't get a lot of warning about it. We'll do better next time.
Okey-dokey.
Uh, everybody from the public who is, uh, listening, uh, again, those of you who, uh, didn't get a chance to speak, if you want to send comments, we'll certainly make sure they get into, entered into the record for tonight. Um, there will be more opportunities, uh, going forward uh, to have this type of format in future meetings, I certainly hope. And, uh, again, our apologies to, if anyone that we weren't able to get to tonight. Thanks, everybody. Uh, without any further business before this meeting, we'll go ahead and adjourn.
Um, Jared, you need to transfer back.
I'm sorry, I do, don't I?
Yeah, you do.
I will relinquish the chair to the mayor.
And I will, uh, declare this meeting adjourned. Good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, buddy.
Good night.
Thank you.
Night, Eric.